Good morning. We're going to get started this morning with an invocation by Pastor Carlos Ramirez of Southern Hills United Methodist Church, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Presley Caldwell, representing Girl Scouts Troop 850. Please stand as you are able.
Let us pray. Lord, we recognize that you rule over all the nations on earth, every country, state, city, and municipality is ultimately under your control. We recognize, however, that you have given us the concept of government in order to protect us and to look after the common good of our group of people. We thank you that in the United States, there is a system of government that was still flawed, seeks to represent the will of the people of this nation and to work together toward the common good. Today, we lift off in prayer this city council, as they exercise the leadership entrusted to them. God grant them your grace to these servants so that they might make wise decisions in matters that will have an impact on the education of the children of our communities, in matters that will have an impact on our environment, in matters that will have an impact on our safety, and in matters that will have an impact on how we live and relate to one another. God, may your spirit inspire their wisdom and peace and guide them to seek a common vision for a common good. When solutions seem impossible, show them the way, for there are differences, let your love prevail. Heal our divisions, heal our land, and make us whole so that we may truthfully say that we are one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Grant to these your servants grace to lead with compassion that moves them to action on behalf of the people, and a reminder to work for the good of the entire Oklahoma City community. Finally, Lord, we pray for your protection over these your servants, protect their hearts and minds as well as their bodies, so that no evil may befall them as they do their work. Bless them as well, for they carry a heavy burden on behalf of this city. Uplift them and sustain them and their families as they do this important work, as we share life together. We ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ, whom with you and the Holy Spirit, reign one God now and forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, Presley, and thank you, Pastor Ramirez. All right, I call this meeting of the city council to order, and we have a few presentations from office of the mayor, and I'll make my way to the front. All right, why don't we end the suspense and have this menagerie of characters come All right. Well, Litter Blitz is upon us in April, and so I would ask, to learn a little bit more about that, I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas litter abatement can be a critical factor in our city's quality of life and economic growth, and whereas assistance in achieving a clean city from residents and community partners reduces taxpayer litter removal costs, and whereas OKC Beautiful and the City of Oklahoma City are teaming up for Litter Blitz 2024, and whereas Litter Blitz 2024 is an effort to clean up neighborhoods, parks, and other public spaces to help beautify Oklahoma City, and whereas neighborhood civic school and business groups, as well as families and friends, can register their team to pick up litter on a date they choose, and whereas each team will receive a supply kit with free trash bags, gloves, and tips for a safe and successful cleanup. And whereas in 2023, more than 5,000 volunteers participated in community cleanup events and removed more than 110,000 pounds of trash from our public spaces. Now therefore, I, David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Litter Blitz 2024 in Oklahoma City and urge all citizens to help combat litter in their neighborhoods, parks, and other public spaces throughout our community.
So, as it was stated, of course, OKC Beautiful leads this effort, and I mean, it really is remarkable, 110,000 pounds of trash removed last year at Litter Blitz. I mean, you can't tell me that doesn't make a difference. That's an amazing impact on our city, and I, as I've said here before, I remember when we didn't have it in 2020, you could tell the difference. So, we're so grateful for all the volunteers, but obviously, most grateful to OKC Beautiful, Lisa Sinars here and her team for organizing this, and we're going to hear from the chief organizer, Natalie.
Thank you. Litter is one of those things that it's easy to cast blame about. We think it's someone else's problem, someone did that, but ultimately, we all accidentally contribute to litter as well, so it's all our responsibility too. So, we want to support you. If you want to put together a team at your school, community organization work will provide supplies for you, give you recommendations of the areas that are most in need, so you can register your team, but it's really all our responsibility. We can all play a part whenever it takes keeping our city clean. It's a really big city, and we have lots of streets and waterways and parks, so it takes us all, so hope you can join us this month. Yes, we are joined by Mother Earth. She is a wonderful volunteer of ours, wonderful board member, but today she is here as Mother Earth, and Terrence the Earth, and then Casey, our education director. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's hear it for the team here. That's where's the key. Thank you, Natalie. All right, let's have our Fair Housing Month, folks, come forward, come on up here. Join me over here, here, we'll stand over here. All right, well, April is also Fair Housing Month, and to learn a little bit more about that, I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas since its enactment on April 11, 1968, the Fair Housing Act has prohibited housing discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin, and disability, and whereas Oklahoma City is committed to the Fair Housing Act's mission and intent to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all and to eliminate housing segregation, and whereas Oklahoma City is engaged in offering a continuum of housing solutions that also addresses the housing needs of those who are the most challenged in our community, and whereas acts of discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are unacceptable to a common sense of decency and fairness, and whereas Oklahoma City's social fabric, economy, health, and environment are strengthened through the inclusion of diverse communities. Now therefore, I, David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Fair Housing Month in Oklahoma City.
Thank you, and of course, our realtors here in Oklahoma City, who are very active on many fronts, I think we might be seeing them again in a few weeks, are leading this charge, and we're going to hear a few words from Emily K. Mitchellson this morning to represent the team.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce Vanessa Johnson and Landry Willis, who joined me. I want to thank you all for supporting the community of the greater Oklahoma City community in making sure that we have fair housing and safe housing for all. It is important to everyone's health and welfare to be well housed, whether it's rental or owned housing, everybody has a hand.
Thank you, and let's give her a hand. Thank you so much. All right, now we've got our Employee of the Month, Maureen. Why don't you join me up here? All right, Maureen, we would love to learn a little bit more about why you are the Employee of the Month, and so I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Maureen Cassidy has been a city employee for five years with the police department, and whereas Maureen Cassidy is an office coordinator for the logistical support division, and whereas Maureen Cassidy noticed the records unit had over 900 missing case numbers, and through her efforts and investigations, she has reduced that number to under 200, and whereas Maureen Cassidy recently stepped up to cover the vacancy and unexpected leave of two court liaisons to help coordinate court appearances between officers and assistant district attorneys until the vacancies could be filled, and whereas Maureen Cassidy also routinely helps the records bureau by assisting residents at the desk, and whereas Maureen Cassidy participates in shop with a cop and grandparents raising grandchildren, and has spent the last four years helping coordinate the city's Heart of the City campaign for police, and whereas this council desires to recognize Maureen Cassidy for her dedication, compassion, and commitment to the residents of the City of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Maureen Cassidy, March 2024, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
All right, well, thank you. Now, this is a resolution. We're going to hear a few words from you in a moment, but first, I want to pass this. So, let's see if we can get a motion in a second. All right, we got it. Everyone cast your votes. I wish to vote aye. Passes unanimously. Well, we'd love to hear a few words from you. Thank you for your service. That was a great story about the way you're stepping up, and we appreciate that very much, and again, we'd love to hear a few words from you.
Thank you. I'm very humbled to be receiving this award today. I work with a great group of people and for an amazing department, and to be singled out for this award is truly, it's very appreciated. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, and by the way, is your son here today? What's his name?
Grayson.
Very cool. Welcome, Grayson. All right, let's hear it for Maureen.
Thank you.
Okay, remaining on the office of the mayor agenda are appointments to the HP Commission, MAPS III, MAPS IV, and the Riverfront redevelopment. Items B through G, we could take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, we're now at items from council, item four. Item 4A is an ordinance to be introduced and adopted with an emergency, and we do have some folks who have signed up to speak, but Councilman Carter, do you want to maybe explain a little bit?
I came to our attention, we had passed an ordinance back in October to adopt the updated building codes, our international building codes, and we failed to give some time for our developers to get ready for that, and so this is just a kind of an amendment to the ordinance, so to speak, to allow 90 days for everyone to come into compliance and be prepared for what it is. It does not take away for those who have already gotten, you know, set up to accept our current that we have in place, but you can kind of operate on both, but I'd be happy to listen to the people who have asked us to speak first.
Okay. Steve Cotton? Cotton? If you mind stating your name and address, and state your name correctly.
My name is Steve Cotton. I am a resident at 13912 Portofino Strada in South Oklahoma City in Ward 5. I'm here on behalf of Vanguard Development Company. We are a commercial real estate development company, primarily doing industrial development in southeast Oklahoma City. We've developed probably 15 buildings there. I was just wanting to speak in front of council to let them know that we were not advised of the change from IBC 2015 to 2018. We've got a full set of plans ready to go to permit on 110,000 square foot office warehouse, and if we are forced to adopt IBC 2018, we would have to redo a big set of our plans that would cost us about tens of thousands of dollars probably to redo our plans at this point for the foundation and structural, so I would just kindly ask if we could have a ramp-up period for this adoption. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. John Smolago.
Good morning, Councilman Mayor. My name is John Smolago. My address is 633 North Denver, that's in Tulsa, and of course, I mentioned that with a bit of trepidation, but I'm here today on behalf of Associated Builders and Contractors of Oklahoma, we're a statewide trade association for commercial construction. Our members do commercial construction all over the state of Oklahoma, of course, as well as here in Oklahoma City. We represent over 300 members, including over 160 contractors, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you all today and support this ordinance. Our association looks forward to a more productive relationship with the City of Oklahoma City to make sure that as these changes occur, hopefully, we can get some notice to inform all of our members. I think it would help out with the communication of these changes as they happen, and I know that that is actually already, that process has already begun. I had conversations with Rick Wickencamp on Friday. He was very quick to respond, as you all have been with this particular ordinance, and we appreciate that very much. I've even received some information on some changes to some fees that are happening here in Oklahoma City. We're going to be getting those out to our members to make sure each of them are aware of those, and issues like this, excuse me, issues like this with building codes, anything to do with construction, it's always going to be helpful for that communication to take place between the city and those that are developing and building the structures here in the Oklahoma City area, and IBC looks to be a partner in that and a good conduit for that information. We appreciate very much the opportunity to address you today and look forward to your support on the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Van Hoos.
Good morning. I'm Jeff Van Hoos. I live at 11828 Milhollow Court in Ward 7. Have the honor of representing Oklahoma City Commercial Developers Association. I'm also serving as the president of Avenge Construction, a commercial general contractor in Oklahoma City for 44 years. I wholeheartedly support the progress of Oklahoma City and consider the change to IBC 2018 as a forward-looking and essential measure. Collaboration within our community to establish a well-planned shift from IBC 2015 to IBC 2018 will nurture a business-friendly environment that resonates with many in Oklahoma. The sudden adoption of IBC 2018 without a transition window presents challenges for design professionals who invest significant time in pre-permit preparations. This abrupt change forces engineers and architects to restart their work, leading to the loss of countless hours and meticulous effort. It also leads to very upset clients. Some of us, myself included, have steel materials onsite in Oklahoma City that were engineered under IBC 2015 but remain unpermitted, rendering them unusable. I can confirm that steel design under IBC 2015 in Oklahoma City has never failed. The value of the steel in my possession is substantial, amounting to $1 million. And while the permit drawings are now ready for submission, I missed the March 1 deadline. The March 1 deadline was unknown to most in the construction industry. I kindly request the opportunity to engage with Oklahoma City staff to propose a notification process that comprehensively reaches all stakeholders in the construction industry. Architects, engineers, developers, contractors, and design consultants necessitate prompt notifications to effectively adapt to regulatory changes. Respected organizations such as the American Institute of Architects, Oklahoma Structural Engineers Association, Associated General Contractors of America, Associated Builders and Contractors, Oklahoma City Commercial Developers Association, Oklahoma Society of Professional Engineers, 30 seconds, National Association of Women in Construction, would significantly benefit from streamlined notifications that can be easily delivered via email. In closing, I strongly advocate for the implementation of notification system for upcoming updates and urge the approval of a transition period to facilitate a seamless shift to IBC 2018. This approach will also pave the way for a smooth transition to IBC 2024, which is on the horizon, I'm sure. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Alan Kirkpatrick.
Alan Kirkpatrick, 421 Northwest 18th, Oklahoma City. We're a structural engineering, a partner in a structural engineering firm in Oklahoma City. We were really excited to see Oklahoma City adopt 2018 IBC. It shows the progressive nature of Oklahoma City. The transition period is a little problematic for designers like myself. It takes a long time to incorporate changes into documents, to verify designs, to go back, make necessary revisions. It's a little bit like having a senior project you work on, and then the last week, the teacher says, "Sorry, the criteria's changed," and you have to go back and redo the whole thing. So, that's it. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Councilman Carter.
Thank you. Thank you all. So, um, in going through this, it was an absolute just oversight that we only gave two, three days' notice. And so this is just going to give now a 90-day notice. You can file on 2015 or 2018 during this period of time. So hopefully, it won't take any kind of, um, forward movement from anyone who's already started that aspect of it. So you've got 90 days to adjust and to get ready and ramped up. I hope that's enough time. After a couple of conversations, I felt like it was. It seemed to be something that everybody agreed upon. So I, I will move for approval.
Before that happens, and I appreciate hearing from folk on this, I reached out on Friday to Director Wickencamp, and I wouldn't, would it be okay if you, at the podium, or whomever in your stead, speak about, I asked specifically the pros and cons of this approach?
Rick Wickencamp, Director of Development Services. So we previously, when we reviewed this, we had some concerns about, uh, staying with the 2018 averse as going back to 2015, because we didn't understand that we could accept plans under both. So once that, that was determined by legal, we don't have any problems with this amendment whatsoever. The challenges that might face our staff is trying to apply two codes at the same time. But when we do that in the field under inspections, we're still doing that anyway, because we're going to have projects that are, were approved under 2015, and as we move forward with 2018, we'll have that same issue. So something we're already dealing with, and with plan review, kind of the same thing if they've been using the 2015 code, and then they'll be applying the 2018 code. And, and we don't know how many plans this will impact, but our, our staff's pretty talented, so we think that's all something we can handle. And so we, we think this is something we can really support and helps with the, the development community, and we're happy to do that.
And then my only concern, and you can assuage it or affirm the concern, uh, safety. I don't, I just heard one of the speakers, you know, say this 2018 is a real positive step forward for OKC. Is there anything in allowing even a 90-day return to the 2015 standards that affects the safety in terms of the construction, the building code standards?
Well, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, and when plans are submitted to us, we rely on engineers to, you know, to sign off that, that the materials are safe. Um, you know, everything right now is being built under 2015. My understanding from some of the feedback I've gotten from, from builders that, you know, the steel that they have will probably still pass the 2018 code. There's just an issue with, uh, the engineers having to go back and redo the calculations under 2018 codes under the 2015 code. So there's nothing I've seen that would make me believe that we're not safe with the current code of 2015, or what was the current code. So either, either way, we should be fine.
Hi, legal. On that note, I just want to pause on that and just make sure, like, in terms of the safety issue and any sort of liability, like, let's say something did happen, you know, under one of the constructions of one of these developments that we've allowed to take place under this 90-day window, on whom does that liability fall then? Like, you see what I mean?
Yeah, I, I don't imagine that there would be any kind of liability. 2015 has been a widely adopted code and has been what we've been using now for many years. So I don't think there'd be any potential issues between the 2018 and 2015 code.
I say all this in public because I, I support what you're wanting to do, Councilman Carter, but it, it came with a little bit of trepidation on my part. It must be important, you know, long, long history of cities and states around the world allowing, you know, developers to get away with all kinds of things for the quick buck. And it is important that we always...
That's true.
So I want to make sure that what we're doing is always keeping in mind development, but stuff that is safe. And that's why I wanted to hear from, excuse me, staff in this moment to make sure that what we're doing is going to prioritize the safety of our people. So just wanted to get that on the, the record right now. So, thank you.
And I would just add to that, that typically what we've done in the past when we look back is we have allowed a transition time. So even moving out of one set of codes to a new one, we've allowed a transition time. And so I think this is more consistent with what we've done historically.
And I should also add that we would not be liable under the Governmental Tort Claims Act anyway for any kind of difference in the code from 2018 to 2015.
Thank you for that. No, it's a good point. Is there any more questions? Okay. I will move for approval.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And then Councilman Carter, for you to fully implement your plan here, you want an emergency as well.
Yes, please.
All right. So we'll take that motion. We have a motion in a second on the emergency. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously and with the necessary seven affirmative votes. Okay. We're moving on now to item 5, City Manager Reports. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We don't have any formal presentations. Just going to make a couple of comments on a couple of these reports. You'll see that we have the Quarterly Riversport Foundation update in your packets. If you have any questions on that, we're glad to work with Riversport Foundation and get any updates we need on that. The annual debt report is included in the packets, and you'll notice that if you look at it, it's a total of $2.3 billion in debt. One billion of that is general obligation bonds, almost 1.1 billion. Another $728 million is long-term debt under revenue bonds. And then additional other long-term debt is $524 million. This summarizes, this report we provided to council annually just summarizes the debt that we have outstanding. Each one of these is supported by a different source of revenue. If you look on the third page of the report, it also shows the various ratings that we have. And just to note again, that the city was reaffirmed as AAA by both Moody's and Standard Poor's for our geo-bond debt. Also, the OQUIT, the Water Utility Trust, has AAA bond, AAA, is AAA rated on their revenue bonds. And just wanted to point that out. It allows us to have access to the best borrowing costs, the lowest borrowing cost. And so something that's really important to us. It's a reflection of our team and how they manage in this council and how you lead. And so I really appreciate that. If you have any questions on the detail of that, I'm glad to provide that. The next report is the sales tax report, and you'll see that we have a decline in sales tax of 4%, just over 4% in March. This is really more of a drop than what we anticipated. Our expectation was to have somewhere around 2% growth through the year. Right now, we're at about 1.6% growth with this decline added in. Use tax also is falling below our projections, although it was positive for this month. It's falling below our projections. Sales and use tax combined are about 2.1 million below target right now. In this current budget, the way that we projected and where our revenues are, where we are with our expenses, I don't have any concerns. I feel like we're in a good position to manage through this. But it does set the stage and make even, next year even more challenging than we thought, what we thought it might be going into this budget that we're going to present to you at the end of April. And so just wanted to give you a heads up on that. We'll continue to monitor. This is the, the greatest decline that we've had, most significant decline that we've had in sales tax in an individual month in a long time. And we will continue to monitor this and keep you updated. But we do caution that, you know, don't just look at one month because there can be variations that are in the data in one month. And so really, at the end of the day, if we look, look back for the last three months, like the last quarter, we're at about 1% growth. So we'll continue to monitor. That's more in line with where we see things slowing, that we aren't expecting right now significant decline. But if you remember when Russell talked to us, he said, "We really, we should prepare our budget and plan for slower growth, but be prepared to respond in the event that the nation did actually slip into a recession." So just, it's, it's something that's a caution for us to be aware of, and it sets that stage going into the budget that's coming up. So just wanted to give you an update on that, and I'm happy to answer any questions or get you any additional information on any of these reports. And that's all that I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Item 6, Journal of Council Proceedings. We can take items A and B with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right. Item 7, Requests for Uncontested Continuances. Item 11B is already listed on the agenda as being withdrawn. What else might you have, Mr. City Manager?
Starting on page 14, 11P1, Unsecured Structures. Item A, there's two items, and item A, they'll both be stricken from the agenda. Item A is, it starts with 6600 Edinburgh Drive, and then there's many other listed because it's an apartment complex. The owner has secured the properties that were of concern there. Continuing on page 15, still under 11P1, Item I, 2319 Southwest 20th Street, the owner has secured. On page 15, Item 11Q1, Abandoned Buildings. There's two items. They'll both be stricken from the agenda. First one is Item B, starting with 6600 Edinburgh Drive, the owner has secured. And then Item J on page 16, 2319 Southwest 20th Street, we're going to strike that. The owner has secured as well. That's all that I have.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Item 8, Revocable Permits and Events. Item 8A is a revocable permit with the Arts Council of Oklahoma City for Festival the Arts, April 25th through 28th in Bicentennial Park. And we have Seth Lewis and Angela Cosby here.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for allowing us to say a few words about Festival the Arts. First, Arts Council OKC has been going through this season of change. We are evaluating programming and mixing things up. And because of that, with our community arts program, we have expanded into more Boys and Girls Club, offering after-school programs for some of our most vulnerable kids in Oklahoma City. And then we also just started programming at the new Northeast 36 and Leighton Senior Center. So we're really excited about things outside of Festival the Arts. But this year, Festival the Arts will be four days. Because of last year's weather impact, we saw record numbers of people come out on Saturday and Sunday. And for many, many years, artists from around the country have been telling us that they don't come to Oklahoma City because it is the longest fine arts festival in the nation. It's rigorous. There's not enough time between other arts festivals to prepare and come to Oklahoma City. So we made the decision to change it to four days. But because of that, we're offering more and exciting activities. And Seth will tell you what to expect this year.
Yes. Seth Lewis, 301 Walker. We're excited to activate the lawn out here on City Hall, but the children's art field, thanks to a generous sponsor this year, will be free to children throughout the community to come and see it. We have great musicians, headliners with Oklahoma City Ballet Philharmonic this year. And just our Art Moves Project, which is throughout the city year-round, will also be hopping around the grounds of festival throughout the 144 performers and visual artists, 80 of which are first-time visitors to Oklahoma City. So we expect the same crowds we have in years past, over 30 food vendors, and a great week for everyone to come out and celebrate Oklahoma City and the arts and bringing the community together.
And we'll extend the hours. Friday and Saturday night, we'll be open until 10:00 PM. And on Sunday, we'll open an hour earlier and stay open an hour later because there's so many people downtown with the Memorial Marathon. April 25th. And you'll all be invited to the opening ceremony. So we'll send an invite out to you.
Good. Councilwoman Hammond?
Well, it sounds like it'll be a very busy week and weekend down in this area. Excited for some of the changes and sort of responding to what you all are seeing with your artists and visitors. So I'm excited to move for approval.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 8B is a revocable right-of-way use permit with ArtSpace Entitled to Hold the Steamroller Print Festival on April 27th on Northeast 3rd. We have ArtSpace as an entitle, has signed up, but not with a name. So may I state your name when you come to the mic? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anna Victoria Pickett, and this is...
Laura Warner.
And we have the annual Steamroller Print Festival at ArtSpace yearly, and we're excited to shorten it an hour this year because it's been a little rigorous in the past keeping up with a, it's a lot of heavy lifting, a lot of heavy-duty stuff. This year, we have more participants than ever before. We have 172 students that are registered, that are Oklahoma City Public School kids that are going to be participating, that have carved large wood blocks that will be printing that day. And we also have 75 visual artists from the community who are participating as well. The festival is family-friendly. It's free. There's going to be live art demos going on all day. And you can also walk away with a lot of free artwork. We have Rick Senet doing screen printing, and you can walk away with some of his artwork. And I think Laura wanted to say a few things as well.
Yeah, we have 30 vendor, artist vendor tents of local artists that will be exhibiting the same day. And our steamroller, if you've not been to see this performance, it is a pretty exciting thing, that to see these pieces of wood that the steamroller rolls over to impress the image onto fabric that will hang all over the Deep Deuce District for you to walk by and buy, purchase. So these are, a lot of these kids that are participating in this are in our mentorship program, and we mentor over 168 kids. So she could tell you about that program because that's kind of what started this whole festival, was to support these kids.
Yeah, and so they come once a month for an entire school day to come and work in our studio space. This year, we've done a lot of new partnerships to where we're actually going out to the schools. We partnered with Native American Student Services, and so we are actually going to the schools instead of just housing them at ArtSpace to learn this process. And we, you know, do everything off of the Cassell framework. We're trying to instill, you know, some sort of community in the, in the kids and confidence in themselves and pursuing a career in the arts.
So thank you all.
We hope to see you there on April 27th.
Thank you. Ms. effects Ward 6 and 7, so feel free.
I'll speak for the both of us. First, thank you for being here. And Ms. Warner, congratulations on your Founder's Day Honoree Award that you received last week.
Oh, thank you.
It speaks to the work that you're doing, and especially this festival. I was just asking Councilwoman Hammond, I said, "Have you been yet?" And she was like, "No, I've seen it from afar." But I'll say to, to those watching, that if, if you have not seen it, the way they describe it, it doesn't do it justice. You have to see it for yourself to see the excitement of people seeing the steamroller just roll over prints that you get to take home and admire the artwork and, and the visual arts of young people throughout our community. I'm very grateful that we've been able to extend it to so many students as far as your program, because I knew, kind of when we first started, it wasn't as large as far as your student ship being participants. So grateful for, for this to be a part of, of our wards, and, and I, I speak for Councilwoman Hammond as we move for approval. Oh, what time?
It's from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM this year.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through F we could take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. And we do have a presentation here on item B.
Yes, Brent Bryant, our Chief Financial Officer, was going to give us an update on this. This is the authorization for our debt for the new arena project. As we talked about this and went through the letter of intent with the Thunder, the expectation was that one of the, one of the steps after we have the tax approved is to authorize the debt so that we can be, begin work on the project. I, I'd mentioned before in an email to the council that we've got an RFQ that's out right now for the program consultant or owner's representative, but we want to make sure that we've got authorization to move forward in debt, with debt before we do that. And Brent's going to just give us an overview of what this authorizes, and we'll be, be willing to take any questions.
All right. Good morning, Brent Bryant. Today is a really busy day for us in the Finance Department. As you know, also on the agenda, we have geo-bonds that we're awarding, and we received 11 bids this morning, some at 8:30 and some at 8:45. We'll be bringing those back to you later this morning. But first, we have these two other debt-related items related to the new arena. As you know, on December 12th, the Voters of Oklahoma City approved a dedicated 1-cent sales tax for the purpose of building an arena for the new home of Oklahoma City Thunder. sales tax for the purpose of building an arena for the new home of Oklahoma City Thunder. City staff includes the City Manager's Office, Finance, Municipal Counselor's Office, along with our Bond Council and Financial Advisor have been working on negotiating a development agreement with the team, along with our developing our arena funding plan. Authorizing the debt today is the next step in the arena project. Before we start spending any money on the project, though, we need to authorize the issuance of debt to know we have all the necessary funds in place for, to fulfill our commitment to the taxpayers of Oklahoma City. It's contemplated that the MAPS for funds originally designated for the Paycom Center will be the first funds to go into the project, followed by the team's $50 million contribution, followed by this financing that we have here that'll be funded and repaid by the dedicated sales tax. Adoption of the attached resolution will provide staff with the ability to respond quickly to the interest rate environment, which is ever-changing, and begin discussions with market participants in an effort to maintain both the most efficient financing for the project and the taxpayers of Oklahoma City. It's contemplated that we'll also bring back an RFP back to you later, probably in about a year, related to issuing for underwriters and for to issue revenue bonds and/or revenue notes for future, that'll be for your consideration. Approval of the OC PPA, item B, authorizes the PPA to issue up to an amount of $950 million in revenue bonds and notes in a series or sub-series on a negotiated basis. The resolution authorizes the Chair and the Vice Chair of the PPA to execute the necessary documents to facilitate the financing. Companion city item is located on item 11S, authorizes the OC PPA to incur the indebtedness and to authorizes this to do it on a negotiated basis. The city resolution also authorizes the city to enter into a security agreement, which is very important because when the sales tax revenues start coming into the city, we need the city to pledge to the PPA that we'll send that money over there to pay the debt. And that's really important to the bankers on this deal. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Sure, I have a few, I think, to start with. I think my first question is, so when we originally briefed about this, the day that the proposal was announced to the public, I wrote in my notes from that meeting that we were intending to take on short-term financing, debt financing. Can you, and then, you know, I see today in our City Manager reports, you know, we have reports on our long-term debt. Can you talk about the difference between those two things and why, and how this fits into short-term versus long-term debt?
Today, when we're doing our GO bonds that we'll do later, those are long-term debt. Those are, have maturities start a year from now or two years from now out to 20 years. Those are deemed what we call long-term debt. And those are a fixed-rate amount each month, I mean, each year, each maturity has a different interest rate on it. And so that's a long-term debt. This will be more of a short-term debt. When you look at when we'll go to debt, when we'll actually borrow the funds, to when we'll pay them off, it's less than 10 years. And it's more of a, we're still evaluating whether we do a note or bond and all of that, but we're getting authorization, they do either-or, just so we can respond to the market. And that has not been finalized. The market will dictate that at the end of the day because of what the market will provide to us at the time. We'd anticipated originally that we would do like a line of credit that would initially fund construction, and then it might perm out to a short-term note. At that point in time, you do that, it's a six-year note, which is pretty much a short-term note versus the 20-year that we're doing on the GO bonds today.
And one of the drivers on that is the fact that the sales tax is 72 months, and so the revenue that's coming in, the sales tax is the revenue that will pay us back, and it's over that six-year period. We will borrow before the sales tax starts so we can start the project, but that's what makes it a shorter term.
Is there a reason why we're being asked to authorize for the full amount instead of maybe like a portion of what's needed to start the project and then transition to the pay-as-you-go, no-debt model? Like why we would be authorizing the full amount for the full project?
When we go out and get the plans and specs and go out to bid, we're still looking on variations on how we'll bid it. We can do, what we typically do is design, bid, build, where we would, and when we do that, I have to sign it in camera reach for them to get to say we have all the money on hand. And in doing that, that's why we would need to do the gross amount now. If we do a construction manager at-risk program related to that, which is not something we typically do, but we've done that on other projects, with that, we can do it in multiple tranches. And that's why we're trying to be flexible here with this, with being in bonds or note, that'll allow us to adjust accordingly. That, we're trying to get authorization so we can, if the market wants us to go right, we can go right, it wants us to go left, we can go left. We're just trying to have flexibility in doing that, again, because we're trying to get the most efficient financing available.
Do we know how much of the tax package, so the one penny tax, 1% tax, will go towards debt service versus actual cost of building the building?
Well, if we borrow the, if we finish the project by the end of 2028, 98% of it will go towards paying the debt because the tax won't start coming in until July of 2028. And if we're open, if we finish at that time, then all of it will go pay towards the debt.
I guess, I mean, I guess my, like the interest to the debt, not the actual, like, obviously, we're going to use that amount to pay back what we borrowed, but like what is the debt, the actual debt service of like, how much money it costs to borrow the money?
That's a, that's a, that's a moving number as we speak. I mean, I was interested in the rates we just got today on our GO bonds. You're going to spend, I hate to give you a number because I know it's not going to be right.
Sure, it might change, but is there a range?
Yes, I could say you're going to spend close to $100 million on interest on this project.
And then you have the capitalized interest.
Then you got the capitalized interest that you...
It's probably 200 million, close to 200 million total with all interest.
So truly, when you all estimated the cost of this project, the actual building of the building is closer to 700 million? Or, because then that's 90, there's two...
You also have to remember, there's the MAPS three money plus the team's contribution too, that will go towards that too as well.
Okay. My understanding was that the, those two things did equal the 950 million, that the team's contribution plus the MAPS money plus what we, what the voters approved in December all totaled the 950 million?
So what we've authored, I mean, this is just estimated, this would allow for up to $950 million in debt in total, but that would be interest and principal? And so when you combine the total principal that you would get that would actually go to the project, plus the 50, plus the 78, this would authorize up to about $950 million for the total project, actually that would go into the project. When you combine all three of those, that's only if the, you know, like this, where the sales tax revenues are projected, what the interest rates, if it would allow up to that. If you remember, in the letter of intent, we had said a minimum of $900 million for the building. This would give us additional authorization if we're able to issue more debt to go up to what would fund $950 million for the project. The borrowing is, that's authorized, is actually $950 million.
Okay. I guess not to exceed 950 million is... My sort of second area of questioning is kind of later in the memo, I don't think in the actual, but the summary of what we're approving. There's a bullet point that talks about the trust indenture and essentially assigning the Bank of Oklahoma as the trustee bank. Can you talk about the role of what the trustee bank does?
Yes, the trustee bank, when you get the bond proceeds, you provide those, those go into an account at the Bank of Oklahoma, and they hold on to those funds. And they, when we make draws to make payment to the construction company, it goes through them. They hold the funds for us. And that's, that's why they're the trustee, I mean, that's basically the trustee. So that's their role, and that's a standard, typical thing that we do when we do the revenue bond. If you can look like on the debt report, if you look at the significant amount of revenue bond issues that we do, those all have a trustee bank, and the OC PPA historically has used the Bank of Oklahoma. And so we were just trying to keep things smooth and as normal, that's why we're using the Bank of Oklahoma. And they charge a very small nominal fee for that service.
Do we know what that B is?
I do not know, but I know it's, I want to say it's in the thousands of dollars.
Okay. Do they receive any, so what is their sort of incentive to do that if they're not making a lot of money off of it?
It's, that's a good one. It's just one of the, I mean, it's just one of their business aspects that they do that for, I think that's just one of the things they like to do.
I mean, at this point, Bank of Oklahoma is also our primary banker, where we put the majority of our funds are deposited with them. So it's just providing a banking service that provides this paying process.
Gotcha. And then my other question, sort of in the same area, is, you know, when it, when there's sort of language about a lot of different potential institutions or lenders, you know, one of my main concerns, and specifically why I'm asking about this trustee bank portion, is that two of the owners of the Thunder own banks or the head of banks. And to me, there's a bit of a conflict there of they have a financial interest in this building getting built, and then also in potentially lending the city money and making money off of that, that transaction. So I just am curious if there was any conversation about limiting that to entities that can't privately make money off of this, this public process, and also later be making money off of their ownership of, of the team that we're truly building this for. There was lots of conversation about this is for a lot of different things, but that we keep coming back to, it's an agreement with the Thunder, it's a building for the Thunder, we have to build it and be a standard. So just curious if that was any conversation had around avoiding those conflicts of interest?
We have not looked at trying to exclude anybody from this. I've tried to, we've talked to large banks, local banks, we've talked to a lot of people. And there's an interest from the local level all the way to the banks in New York per se. So we're, there's a lot of interest in providing funding for this project. So, but we have not considered that. I don't know, I think legal would have to weigh in on that.
The team would not be involved in making any of the selections on our financing, like who we're selecting to negotiate with for the, for the agreement. The team would not have any role in that. So they would be, they would be removed from our decision. We would make that decision ultimately.
But if, you know, it's, if they want to be competitive, if the bank owned by, you know, someone who owns the Thunder, you know, wants to be competitive, they can undercut, you know, they're, it's not my concern that the team has direct influence over who, that they have particular knowledge and relationship with the entity that is the city, and they have a motive to eventually make, make profit off of their ownership of the team as well as potentially money off of this, this indebtedness that we would be incurring. So that's really my concern, is not so much that the, although now that opens up some other questions, it's like, does the lady protest too much? But I think those are my sort of main questions. Let me just double-check if I had anything else that I wrote. No, that is it for me, thank you.
I had, I had a question pertaining to section two on page three, competitive bidding waived sale of the obligations. Can you help me to understand why we are waiving the competitive bidding process? And, you know, I heard you talk through the areas of us about to go into this GO bond conversation, so it's going to be very interesting to hear the comparisons of what we're talking about now in comparison to that for two reasons. One, our GO bond process, we've been ahead of schedule this, in some aspects, as far as with the projects, and we were working to, to go earlier as far as a bond for the next year or so, to my knowledge and understanding. I know there's still some speculation in some conversations that probably still need to be understood. But from 2017, for us to look at 2015, to me, that minus is two years from 10 years. So that means it's, it's a little earlier than, than normal. And we talked through that in those conversations that we, that I understood hearing, and I could be wrong, so please correct me, that we were talking about that long-term indebtedness in comparison to this. So, so those are conversations that my ears will definitely be listening as we go through this GO bond sale. So speak to me about the competitive bidding process and why is this common for us to do for this type of venture?
Yes.
And if so, when have we done it before?
If you'll refer back to, if you look at the, the bond report that we provided to you today, all of the revenue bond issues are done with, under-negotiated. We're required by state law for GO bonds, for the, what we're doing today, to do those competitively. And so, and what that is, is we fix a date. We came to y'all a month ago and said, "This is the date." We do all this, we put out all the documents, and at 8:30, the tax-exempt bonds bids were due, at 8:45, the taxable bonds were due. And there's a hard day, and they, they provide a hard bid on what those rates are. And you're going to look at them, they're going to vary over, you know, we've got like seven bids, you've got four bids for one set and seven for another. And that's, and we have to, that's the best we can do. Under a negotiated one, you look at the market conditions as they are, you look at what rates were yesterday, you look at them are, and what you do under a negotiated basis, you set a rate, and then you go out and have the underwriter call their investors. And the investors say, "Well, you take the 2024 maturity or 2025 maturity at 1.5%." And they'll say, "Yeah, I'll buy $5 million worth of bonds." Okay? Then somebody else will come in and say, and you look at it, and you're trying to just say, sell $5 million worth of bonds, but if you get what we call oversubscribed where you actually have $15 million worth of orders for $5 million worth of bonds, that tells you your rate is what they call rich. It's got a little too rich. So what you do then, then you take that 1.5% yield on that bond, and you lower it to 1.35%, and that's what, what you call the negotiated part of that. You do that for each maturity as you go about it. That gets you the most flex, then you can adjust, and that's, that's what we do with revenue bond issues. That's just the standard way, and I think there's a more efficient way of, of doing financing. It's not just something that we do in Oklahoma City, it's throughout the country. That's how we do revenue bond issues.
Brent, give the examples of the different trusts and different sources of the different revenue bonds that we do, where we use negotiated sale, where we waive competitive bidding?
Yes, the water utility does that with theirs. When we do our GO bonds, when we refund them, we do those all through negotiation. The Economic Development Trust, the bonds that they've issued, the Airport Trust, all of those do them through a negotiated process. And it's the most efficient way of doing, I think it's, you get a better rate at the end of the day. Because what happens, if you look at it, you may have a situation where you're not getting any bids at all for a certain maturity, that means you need to increase it a little bit so you can sell the bond. So it goes both ways, but if you, again, you're selling them to the investors, and they got to be willing to, you know, they're looking at all kinds of different factors as to what rates they're willing to pay, are willing to, you know, provide the funding for us and what yields they're willing to accept. And so that's why, that's why it works. And the other thing is, is if we get into the market and we say, "Okay, we're going to do it on X day," and something happens in the national economy, some bad number comes, economic data comes out, and it makes the market go crazy, we can not, we can stop and say, "Okay, let's put it off for another two weeks." And that gives us flexibility, and that's what, that's another added value with doing negotiated. Like today, bad, bad data could have come out today, and we were stuck, we're stuck with whatever we get, you know, under the, under the competitive bidding approach. And then you had another question, I think, about GOs, just the GO process relates to, we typically do a 10-year program, but there is anticipation that it'll be less than 10 years. A lot of that has to do with, we've, we've done well on our rate, interest rates, and we've also done well with our net assessed value has grown. The last year, our net assessed value grew, it grew citywide over 8%, which is really good. And so that, we're getting additional capacity, and that's why we've been able to sell more bonds sooner rather than later.
Thank you for that. I think that's important as far as this, this conversation. I think that's important as far as this, this conversation is, and as we yield to, or we work towards the, the rest of the meeting, when we get to the end of, of the excitement of what's to come. And again, as we talk about, one, with the, the funding for this particular arena, and how we have incurred this debt in, that we're working to incur the indebtedness for, how certain projects are able to do that. That's, I think, where most of, some, a few of us are concerned is how we prioritize certain projects and not, not others in the same, same lens. So that's, that's my concern with, with what we're looking at here as far as, as this. So I appreciate you answering both of my questions.
Just two things. One, thank you, Brent, for calling me on a Saturday and for a half hour answered that question about the competitive bidding, bidding process, and walked me through almost word for word what you just heard in public here. Not a finance major, and it's not my background, but I appreciate your level of expertise in listening to you speak it again. It must be kind of what I sound like when I'm like, here's how film works, you know? But I appreciate just listening to you nerd out about it. And I can see your mind actually walking yourself through, like, okay, here's why we're doing this, here are the pitfalls, here's the, okay. So, this one, again, on a Saturday afternoon. So I appreciate that. The only other thing I would say, or it's actually a question, if you wouldn't mind, just kind of related to this, you and I, city manager, have been working through finalizing the working group with the resolution that's related to the community benefits agreement that we approved, that this council approved. If you just briefly, you know, because here we are doing this financing portion, right, of this arena, but another component of that arena was the community benefits agreement, and I think now might be a good time to kind of let the public know where, where you are with that and where we are with that process. Thank you.
So we're in the stage, early stages here, we're about to get, get developed, get the, the, almost call it community policing, get the labor peace agreement working group that was called for in the resolution set. And it calls for two representatives from labor, some representatives from the staff, representatives from our current operator, and from the, the team. And so we're in the process of contacting those folks and getting that set so that we can begin the discussions about doing research on the labor peace agreement. In the, in the resolution, it actually called for bringing back to the council the findings of the working group in July, the summer, bringing the findings back, and then potentially a recommendation. I think if the group came together, you'll have representatives from management and labor. If the group came together and had consensus on a recommendation they would like to make to the council, that would come back. If the group just together agrees on the information that is basically the findings of the group, that can also be brought forward to the council. And so beginning this, the, the work on that, it'll be starting in the next few weeks.
And so ultimately, council will either receive a recommendation from this working group, or they'll receive a bit of an education, the way I've received quite the education, meeting with representatives from Milwaukee. And we'll have to decide then how to proceed, which I, to me, there's, it's just such a no-brainer of what to do. Hopefully, council will understand and move accordingly. So thanks for that update. My only other question about that is because of that July date that the resolution calls for, we're kind of looking at, you know, either trying, not just maybe doing monthly meetings for this working group, but maybe meeting, you know, a bit more regularly than that? Could you speak to that, please?
Yes. I mean, we're going to, we're going to evaluate, I think, as we start to get together, how often we need to meet. I don't want to overwhelm those. A couple that I've talked to already have said, hey, we're willing to participate, but I only have so much time to contribute. So I want to respect their time and the group. So we'll probably pace that based upon what the group feels like they need to get the work done. And it does reflect to, the labor peace agreement is in relation to our operator agreement with the operations of the arena. And so we're working together with our current operator going through that, they'll be a part of that discussion as well.
Just wanted to have that on the, the public record, just so people know that that is not something sitting in the background, and it totally relates to, you know, we're going to finance this arena, but remember there was that vital community benefits component to this as well. And so I appreciate you, city manager.
I apologize. I did have one other question. Someone said maps for resolution, and that reminded me of, of a question I had related to the 70 million that is anticipated to be moved from sort of the maps for package to this project. My first question is, what is the mechanism by which that is in, because I, as far as I recall, that's never come to a vote.
Right.
Of either maybe the maps for oversight committee or us.
That's correct. That's correct. So that's another step that's coming in the next few weeks, is to bring the recommendation on that. There's, there's a couple of amendments to the implementation plan, and they'll go to the advisory board first, and then come forward to the city council in the next few weeks.
Okay. And then, so my sort of follow-up is that in the maps for resolution, one of the very, I mean, first page says that the council declares it's an administrative intent regarding maps for, which I've always sort of heard to mean the monies related that are being raised through this tax. And it says, no city-issued bonds will be issued and repaid in the implementation of maps for, and a pay-as-you-go approach will be adopted for all projects on maps for. Now, I'm assuming that I'm going to hear, well, this is not a maps for project, so that doesn't count, but it is money raised through the tax mechanism that this resolution was affecting. So is that something that we're concerned about? You know, are we setting a precedent where other monies can be moved to other purposes and, and issue debt on? You know, what, what, how are we sort of justifying this, the use of the monies this way when, when we declared our intent to the voters specifically on those dollars that they voted on in December of 2019?
Right, right. So I'll answer, and then if Kenny wants to weigh in on it too, to give the explanation, I mean, to, as far as like from a legal perspective. So basically, the maps for project, none of the maps for funds will go towards debt, and none of the original maps for projects will have debt included in them. This allows us to take, the amendment for the implementation plan that we bring back would allow for the use of maps for funds to go into another project that is related, like it was originally the downtown arena we currently have, this would move it into the new downtown arena that we would have. The sales tax that was approved by the voters was a different sales tax, was not associated with that resolution, and that was a new sales tax that, as you said, is not a maps sales tax, it's not maps for. It is a penny sales tax, but it's not maps for, and it's not a map sales tax.
But I, I feel like we, in our conversation just earlier, one of you all mentioned that, well, there's the 70 million from, from maps for that will also be sort of affecting this potential $200 million that we would be paying in debt service.
No. And if I said something like that, that was a mistake on my part. The intent, what I'm trying to communicate is the money from the team, team's contribution and from maps for will cash fund portions of this project, and then will, the debt that's repaid only from the new penny that was approved, the new arena sales tax, will repay the debt. That's the only thing that will go towards debt.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other, any other questions, comments?
I, I would like to, one thing, I'd just like to clarify, the trustee bank fee is $300 a year, so.
Okay, we have one person who has signed up to speak on this item, Michael Washington.
Thank you, sir, my illustrious man. Thank you. Well, now, 100 Park Place Midwest, with a big M on top of it, what in the hell is going on here? That's right. You mean to tell me, you didn't tell the voters that rather than voting for 950 million, that they're going to be voting for over a billion dollars in interest totally? Wow, people! Who in the hell y'all think y'all talking to around here? I don't give a damn about these rich folks, meaning not to say I'm talking about their money, but them as a citizen, I do. Let's get that point clear. Now then, you're going to tell me now that the Oklahoma Thunder going to put up 50 million, and now you're going to borrow from maps for, from 13 projects, taking money out of those projects that could have been used by them to give to all the wealthy people outside of these? Isn't that something now? Come on, y'all. We deserve better than that, even for my popcorn candy and soups that I buy. You understand me? I have a right now to be misled, totally confused, discombobulated with fake and felonious information. That's right, you heard me, I'm not going to bite my tongue. Once again now, I want y'all to understand this, why I'm standing here as well. Thank you all for coming in, y'all my good friends, I like that. Now then, look, Michael, I'm not going to bow down for anybody, give a damn who come in. Now, now, this great Brent is a good Brent, and I consider a friend, but man, we have great respect, I still have great respect for her, but let me tell y'all people something. The Fair Bidding Act requires that they have opportunity to bid on state funding. Don't y'all remember that? Let me go back to these people, while they listen to me, where I'm coming from. Now then, how in the hell y'all going to tell me where the real interest here at? Y'all violating state law and federal law. They're supposed to be a fair bidding. I go, what'd he say, it takes seven votes to pass that? Really now? Who's really running this? The Chamber of Commerce for you? I see it two year on the board, and I know personally on the Chamber of Commerce, so they're directing you what you can and can't do, and what you need to speak on today. Wow, isn't that something? Let me say, closing, I got 37 seconds more, more, boy, time show flying when I'm having fun.
30 seconds.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Amy and I, we're clear on that point. Let me say, finally, now you got a bank, the owners of the Thunder team have a direct interest in, so what are they going to do? Make sure that their money's protected? Make sure your money is spent the way they want it to? Oh, I didn't know we needed this, so I now need to go over for that. Oh, come on, people. Ba, 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 ba. Arnold Schwarzenegger, thank y'all very much.
All right, thank you. Will, now proceed. We can take a motion. Well, generally, we would do the, the docket together, but since this has certain vote requirements, I think we'll take this item separately. So we'll take a motion on item B on the PPA docket. I second it. All right, do we have to go verbal? Oh, no, there we go. Sure that wasn't the result. Let's try that again.
Let's do verbal.
All right, verbal, okay. If the clerk will, please call the roll.
Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Aye.
Ward five?
Aye.
Ward six?
No.
Ward seven?
No.
Ward eight?
Yes, please.
Mayor?
Aye. Passes seven to two, and with the required six affirmative votes to incur indebtedness, and the required seven affirmative votes to waive competitive bidding. Now we can take the rest of the PPA agenda with one motion. All right, we want to do, we have a motion by Councilman Stansberry, is there a second verbally? All right. Clerk, please call the roll for the remainder of the PPA docket.
Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Aye.
Ward five?
Aye.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward eight?
Yes.
Mayor?
Aye, passes unanimously. Okay, we'll adjourn OCPPA. Now, we have some council members who need to leave early today, and so we also have some items that require six and seven votes, and so we are going to pull those up right now. And we'll start with the companion item to the vote we just took. That would be 11 S. So this is 11 S. This is a resolution authorizing the incurrence of indebtedness by the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, et cetera. Again, this is basically a repeat of the vote we just took, just this time by the council. Do we dare try a, an electronic version? All right, we have a motion by Councilman Stansberry, second by Councilwoman Peck. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Aye.
Ward five?
Aye.
Ward six?
No.
Ward seven?
No.
Ward eight?
Yes, please.
Mayor?
Aye, passes seven to two, with the required six affirmative votes to incur indebtedness, and the seven affirmative votes required to waive competitive bidding. Now, Mr. City Manager, are we ready for the GO bond votes?
We're not ready yet.
We're not ready yet. Okay. So we're on a knife's edge here. We will, the moment you're ready, I will stop everything and, and return to that. In the meantime, I suppose we will advance to the consent docket, and we have a scheduled presentation on item AV. Is there anything else the council member wishes to pull out for separate comment or vote?
Yes, I would like to vote separately on item A.
Okay.
And then pull item AC just for a little more information.
Mayor, for correction, you said AV or AB as in?
AV as in Victor has a presentation.
Just to hear the update for AF, please.
Did you say AF as in Frank?
As in Frank.
Okay. All right, if that's it, we'll take item 9A and its separate vote, but we do first have a citizen who signed up to speak, Michael Washington.
Oh, no, what's wrong with you? AB?
9A.
Oh, 9A, oh. Amendment one, two professional service agreements with Fussis LLC for the provision of a real-time information center for the police department, increase of $90,000. Where are we going here? Professional service agreement with this company, who are they, by the way? Was this revealed to us prior to an agreement being passed by this horseshoe body? What are we asking a $90,000 increase for? I fail to see it in information here. So what are we going to do just because we are part of the government infrastructure? I can just say something and get money? Because I've got buddies and friends, I already know that we going to pass it around the buck? I'm interested here because you don't not give me an impression here other than increase of 90,000. Don't the citizen want, should know how, why, when, or how, and where this money is going, and for what reason? Maybe a little bird in the sky can say, wait a minute, I need 100,000 of that, so I can take back to my family in the sky. Huh? I'm sure some of us got pets, don't we? Now then, Michael Meese seems to be a bit critical. Oh, I'm not. I am merely a representative of other people. I'm told by an honorable mentor of mine, Michael Meese. I'm told by an honorable mentor of mine, Malcolm X, that an injustice anywhere is an injustice everywhere. You people are spreading this money around like it's growing on trees. And I tell you what, if they are... Tell me, show me where those trees are. Buy me a little bit. This is really serious. What are is this increase for? I'm not gonna say any underhanded stuff per se, pick out anyone, but the individual person, because I don't do that. I have to have strict evidence. But I am saying it's questionable that increase of 90,000, okay? Increase.
30 seconds, please.
Amy and I, oh, Amy, stop. Oh. Now, 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 in closing, I wanna say. Can we get more clarification before y'all talking? Can I get somebody up here to talk about this so that the public can see where 90 more thousand dollars that money is going? I would definitely appreciate it. And in closing, as Arnold Schwarzenegger once said, and I sell everybody, bam, I will be back.
All right. This vote was requested to be held separately, so let's see if we can get a...
Yeah, I just, I'd like to make some comments about why I pulled this. The... This, just so the public has a little more information, this is an amendment to an agreement with Fussis LLC, which is the company that is, essentially has the platform for our real-time crime center that was implemented over the last year or two. This specific amendment is of grave concern to me, given that it is to add a package of software and associate hardware, meaning cameras, into a number of metro schools within our city limits. While, yes, it is in collaboration, it appears, with those different school districts. When this whole process started, I referenced the Bureau of Justice Assistance's essentially like white paper handbook for effectively implementing this type of surveillance mechanism. And one of their kind of points of recommendation, I guess I should say, is titled Building Trust With The Local Community, which I maintain has not happened on an adequate scale for this at all throughout this whole endeavor. I think the most I've seen is, oh, we did a few press releases and a press conference, and so now there's news stories about it. But that was literally at, like, after it was already implemented. All the policies were written, which I've never actually seen policies for. They were just written on administrative level, never brought to council. There were no community events held to describe what this does and how or not it is infringing on your civil rights. And in particular, as this relates to filming minors without their parents' consent, this, you know, this is a... You know, we talk, we reference 1984 and Big Brother, but like, this is... We're doing it, and we've really not told the public adequately what they can expect and how this could or... And how we're avoiding and ensuring that this technology and intrusion into people's lives is not being abused. In particular, you know, this blurb from the Bureau of Justice Assistance, you know, specifically says, "Engaging stakeholders before you start recording their activities, capturing their license plates, or monitoring their citizens is an important step that will further sustain the agency's legitimacy and trust, which ultimately will help ensure a safer community." This is not me. This is literally like, they're giving the blueprint for, do you want the public to trust your police force and your police agency? Here's how you do it. And as far as I have seen, we have not done that in any meaningful way. And so now adding this layer of adding these cameras into schools, again, with no policy presented to the community, I would be shocked to hear if any parents of OKCPS or Middel, Crooked Oak, Edmund, Moore, Millwood, Mustang, Putnam Heights, Putnam City, Western Heights, and Yukon are aware that the council is voting on this today. We're doing all of this backwards, and the sort of, let's keep it under the radar, let's not help people understand. You know, we're gonna brag about how we can respond to incidents or solve crimes, but we're not gonna talk about the ways in which law enforcement now has access to recordings of all of us to a certain degree that we were not aware of. That's government intrusion into our private lives that, for me, is not... Does not make me feel safer, and I think needs a lot more scrutiny than when we're giving it. And again, sort of the, we're just sort of approving these things without real community involvement and awareness, informing them the... That their activities are gonna be recorded, and particularly knowing for young people in schools. It's just, I mean, those are minors. They're minors in schools, and they are required to be there by law. They don't have an option to not go into that building without legal consequences. And so what, we're not... They don't have an option to now not be recorded. And that, to me, is a real question of how we're respecting people's civil liberties and their right to not have the government be involved in intruding in their life on a day-to-day basis. So that's, I wanted to help explain and help the public understand what this item was about, but also why I cannot support voting yes on it.
On another note, I think it's important to also note that there is legislation going through our state that would criminalize minors for interactions with law enforcement if they flee. Whereas before, that had not been a part of this. So to the concern she has, that's also a concern for me because of what all of these things are happening around us as far as not just state legislation, but now the implementation of what local government is also doing. So it's very difficult to understand some of these things as to how they can be impactful and helpful. And, you know, I understand with a couple of incidents that we have had in the community that because of those cameras, we were able to capture the folks who did the crime immediately. Good. However, there's still a concern about the ways our community still feels over police, over surveilled, as far as surveillance is concerned, instead of having those one-on-one interactions of just, how are you doing and how was your day? Those are really issues that we have within how we talk about what is going on. And I think it's also important to note how even some of the major companies ring, if I'm not mistaken, it was ring, that decided to not be a participant in some of these real-time crime center programs that have been implemented across different cities. So I think we should really pay attention to some of these things and where those cameras are, because I can go in certain communities and I don't see them. However, every block in my neighborhood, I see them. So I think that is also... If we're gonna do it, it needs to be done equitably, if they're gonna be everywhere.
Okay, we're gonna pause this discussion. We're racing the clock. We now have the geo bonds ready, and so we're gonna move to item 11J, which will be followed by K, L, and M, and a series of votes.
Yes, sir. Mayor, under item 11J, we received a total of seven tax-exempt proposals on the $110,220,000 geo bond, Series 2024. And it's a recommendation to award that to the lowest bid to Jeffries LLC for a true interest cost of 3.449046. Again, Jeffries LLC, 3.449046. And these are the tax-exempt bonds at $110,220,000.
Okay, so that explanation was just for item J?
Yes, sir.
Do we wanna... Does it need separate explanations each time? J and K are kind of related?
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, so let's do J and K, and then we'll talk about the rest. All right, so we vote on award purchase, item J?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is, we haven't tried it in a while. Do we wanna rev it up again and see? Second. Okay. All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Ward one? Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Aye.
Ward five?
Aye.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward eight?
Yes, please.
Mayor?
Aye, passes unanimously. Now, item K. This is the ordinance on final hearing, providing for the issuance of the geo bonds in the sum of $110 million, just described by Mr. Bryant. I guess we'll just go ahead. Is there a motion in a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Aye.
Ward five?
Aye.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward eight? Mayor?
Aye, passes unanimously. Now, we need a separate vote on the emergency, which will require seven affirmative votes. Is there a motion in a second? We got a motion in a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Aye.
Ward five?
Aye.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven? Ward eight?
Yes.
Mayor?
Aye, passes unanimously, and with the required seven affirmative votes. Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir. Under item six, or 11...
L.
L. We would like to recommend, we received a total of four bids, and we'd like to recommend the lowest and best bid to Hilltop Securities at a true interest cost of 4.856339. Again, Hilltop Securities, 4.856339. And this is our taxable. We had a taxable Series 2024, and it's for approximately $10,280,000.
Okay. Well, is there a motion in a second to approve award purchase? We've got a motion in a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Aye.
Ward five?
Aye.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven? Ward eight? Mayor?
Aye, passes unanimously. And then item M is related. This is the ordinance on final hearing, providing for the issuance of the general obligation bonds in the sum of $10,280,000. Is there a motion in a second to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
We've got a motion in a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Oh, yes, aye.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Aye.
Ward five?
Aye.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward eight?
Yes.
Mayor?
Aye, passes unanimously. Now, the emergency is needed on this, and is there a motion in a second for that?
Removed.
We have a motion in a second on the emergency. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Aye.
Ward five?
Aye.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward eight?
Yes, please.
Mayor?
Aye, passes unanimously, and with the required seven affirmative votes to adopt the emergency. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for helping us race the clock. All right, so we are...
Back to A.
Back to item A on the consent docket. Are there any other comments or questions?
Is it possible, I would like to hear from someone. I know the memo speaks to this, but maybe someone could speak to what this item does?
Wait, Gory, Chief of Police. So just a couple of things with this. First of all, this has not put cameras in the schools. They're already there. We have access to those cameras now in the event of an emergency. It just is a delayed process that we have to go through to get that information in the event something happens in the school. So this would allow us to integrate those school cameras into our real-time information center. It's not surveillance. There's very strict guidelines on when we would be able to access those cameras, most specifically if an event was to occur in the schools. And the reason that we're asking for the funding to do this is the schools want this integration. They want that protection of if there is, you know, for example, something really serious that happens within the school, such as a shooting threat or something like that. The schools, in most cases, cannot afford, as part of their budgets, to pay for that integration, so we're gonna pay for that Fussis core that integrates the real-time information center into those cameras. If you'll remember too, one of the things that came out of the Uvalde After Action Report is that access to cameras in a critical incident is very important. It allows officers to get eyes on the situation and know where the problem is, so when they go in there, they're prepared for that. We have campus resource officers, school resource officers in a lot of our schools in the metro, but not all of them. So this just allows us to provide that extra layer of protection. And again, this is coming from the schools at their request. We agreed to different MOUs with the schools and how we can use that in following the FERPA guidelines and other things, and how we can use that video and how we can access it. And the only time we would be accessing that would be when there's an incident that occurs, police are responding, they need our help in the school, and we're trying to figure out what's going on in there, where that problem is, and how to get our officers in there to better address it. So hopefully, that addresses some of the questions that you may have had. And again, we're not installing any cameras. The cameras are already in the schools. This is just the core that allows the interface so that we can see those cameras in the event of an emergency.
I guess, Chief, the important thing is that as far as integration is concerned, the school districts that are supportive of this include Crooked Oak, Edmund, Middel, Millwood, Moore, Mustang, Oklahoma City Public Schools, Putnam City, Western Heights, and Yukon. All want this for our kids, right?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do wanna, not to you, too.
Oh, so I do have one more. I have a follow-up if I can...
Sure.
...jack, and then pass it back. So where are these policies that... Can we get a copy of these policies for how these, this is being... Like, when you can access the cameras? What process you have to go through to access the feed?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to get that. And do those policies address what type of incident in which we're allowed to then access those feeds? Because, you know, like, a fight in the school, you know, is that... Can we then access that? Or is it just if we get a report of an active shooter on site? Like, what are those parameters for deciding what type of incident we can then go access that feed for?
So the MOUs with the schools will address some of that. We can't be so specific to try and narrow down every particular incident, because sometimes something that starts out as a simple fight could escalate to a firearm being involved and other things as well. So it's going to be pretty much any time that a 911 response is required in the school and something active is going on there, those teachers or someone in that school needs help, and we're responding, and if the incident requires it, that we be able to get eyes on that, to be able to advise our officers where they need to respond in the school. And you have to understand, you know, we do a lot to document the layout and other things of these schools, but when an officer is driving to a call and they're told this is occurring in room 101, officer probably doesn't know where room 101 is and can't look at a map in their car while they're going. So the Arctic would allow an analyst, one of our civilian analysts, to get eyes on that and say, okay, room 101 is here at this location. This is where the problem is. And so that's the premise behind this and what we're doing. As far as defining what exactly we could use it on, I don't know how we would narrow that down, but it's gonna be any type of, you know, police response that's escalated to a level that, you know, we need to get there and find out what's going on.
Is there... Is there... Is there, is there a plan in those MOUs or in any of these policies to provide guidelines for when footage captured through this feed can be used in a, any kind of prosecution case?
That would be dictated by criminal law, by the statutes that are in place and how that can be used. And if there's ever a question as to whether or not something could be used in that manner, a judge or a district attorney would decide that.
Okay. Well, I'd love to get a copy of these policies and the MOUs. Will those be something that we vote on as counsel? Or is there some other conversation that's more important? We curi, will we vote on those MOUs?
It is actually.
Oh, then, then potentially...
Well, we're done. We're done. Go, I'm sure.
Okay, well, I just, you know, have questions and would hope that our administrative manager would be listening so that there could be follow-up, but apparently...
And our presiding officer.
So, with those MOUs, I was, we were being disrespected, and I think it's fine to call it out. Will we be voting on those MOUs with the schools, or is that something that they just vote on?
No, those are legal agreements that we enter into between, not legal staff, you know, Mr. Jordan's staff reviews all of those and helps us write those MOUs, so they go through that legal process, but those are agreements with the schools.
It's not a formal contract. It's just an agreement on how we're going to work together.
Okay. Well, I'd love to get a contract of the MOUs, particularly for, I know not all of, I guess, actually, really for all of them, even if they're not covering my ward. I think there's interest sort of of different areas of the city and different school districts, knowing that some of my residents will send their kids to other school districts within the city limits. And I really love to get a copy of those policies, because again, my concern is in how these things can be used to harm children and harm our residents by abusing access to surveillance of them. And I don't think that is something that should be, I would hope that other people would feel that that is a grave thing that we should be taking seriously and not sort of dismissive of those concerns, even if you don't agree with them. So, that's all I have.
Chief, I'm the father of two kids who went through Oklahoma City Public Schools, and I can't thank you and your officers enough for the way you protect our kids, and I fully recognize that this item aids that work. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, sir, and that's exactly what it's all about, is protecting those kids and protecting those teachers that have a very difficult job too. We understand that.
Yep.
Thank you, Chief. You might want to leave the podium for my comments, because I don't want them directed at you. Mayor, you invoked your family. You might recall, before I came to this job, what my work was as a middle school teacher. So, I also want to keep your kids safe. I want to keep them all safe. My guess is council is about to vote in favor of this item. What I would like to reiterate to you as the mayor, to this council, and to anyone listening, I understand the impulse to support this measure. I even understand the impulse to, for, as a parent, as a family member of someone who has a child in any of the school districts that Councilman Stonecypher listed that appear on this memo. I understand this impulse. I, when my mother fell, my impulse was to go take care of her. Like, when someone, when we care about someone, you want to, when they're your blood, I get it. Hear me, though. This measure affects the back end. What I have always advocated from this horseshoe till I am blue in the face, till I literally want to cry sometimes because I don't feel heard, an ounce of prevention will go much further and deeper. The chief invoked Uvalde. If that school had invested in what we know from research, I just pulled up for parents who are concerned about your children, for the parents, when you look at KOCO's article about the young man who took his life recently and another attempted suicide in Mustang, same school, I see people here for the Sunset Amphitheater, so I'm to understand Mustang schools might be of interest to you, right? We also made, as you know, international news. And by the way, I go on at length about this topic, because it's why I'm here as a former middle school teacher. Nothing on this planet matters more to me, nothing, than undoing the damaging policies that got us in this mess in the first place. And what are those damaging policies? It is the lack of funding in our public schools, and I want parents to hear me so clearly right now. If you're scared about your children's safety in your schools, if you're scared of bullying, if you're scared of mass shooters, then ask your federal government representatives and your state government representatives to better fund teacher pay and access to mental health counselors in your schools. I can't be clearer than those two remedies. Right now, in your children's schools, too many of your counselors, and I say this as someone who taught at Jefferson on the South Side, too many of our counselors are not tasked with helping your children when it comes to their emotions, when their anger becomes unregulated and misdirected at the wrong person. That counselor instead is tasked with standardized test implementation, and they're not tasked with when your child is sunken into a deep, deep depression or a deep, deep anger. We don't have enough mental health counselors in any OKCPS school, in any Millwood, Crooked Oak, Middel, Moore, Mustang, Putnam City, Western Heights. Ask those children. Ask them, ask them, ask them if they have enough mental health counselors to help them. Ask them if they had enough prior to the pandemic. Ask them how they're doing post-pandemic. We are in the middle of Women's History Month, and we spend a lot of attention talking about the mental health of women, as we should. Did you know how much your young boys are suffering right now, though? Did you know there's a recent report out right now, right now, showing that young boys have suffered more mental health affliction as a result of COVID? Did you all know that? I did not know that until this research. I am a feminist. I'm a proud feminist. A lot of my research and media studies and the root causes of real-life violence took me to the representation of women. I can assure you, you will always have an advocate in terms of women and their autonomy. Two things can be true at once, though. Your young men are also facing a crisis right now. And who is enacting most of these school shootings? Young, white men. Your children are doing them, not some migrant coming across the border. Believe me. So, when we hear our chief say, we are going to have access to cameras that already exist in the school in the event one of these mass shootings happen, or the event you saw in Owasso where NEX, right, was an in-school suspension, and think about this process, was an in-school suspension, then in-in-school suspension, gets in a fight with other students, a verbal argument, and then that restroom break they all take afterwards, the fight escalates. What went wrong? Where was the mental health counselor right then when NEX got sent to in-school suspension? When those other kids who bullied NEX were sent to in-school suspension? Where was the mental health counselor to ask those children, why are you misbehaving in the classroom? What can we do to resolve this emotional disruption in your life so that you can go back to geometry and learn the Pythagorean theorem? Learn how to write a five-point essay? Learn how gravity works? Rather than putting them in something called in-school suspension where they are not receiving education? When they go to in-school suspension, which I used to do one hour a day at Jefferson, one hour a day for an entire year, so I know of what I speak. And when I was in those in-school suspensions, let me tell you what happened. Too often, the kids who are in there do not receive any homework that they are missing from the classroom. They don't receive it. And so, what do they do in there? They're on their phones, and they're talking to each other. I see some of you rolling your eyes, but I promise you, some of you who are rolling your eyes right now are going to be the very people on Facebook groups going, protect our children! Protect our children! And when I'm right here telling you how to protect your children, I roll. You need to check your heart if that's what you just did, and you know who you are. Because I want to protect your children, which means the way to do it is to actually have mental health counselors, when the child acts out in the classroom, to send the child to that mental health counselor, not to a room with no windows and no homework to keep them on par with instruction. Because when they fall behind from that instruction, and then they return to the classroom, and the classroom has moved on to the next topic, the child feels dumb. And when they feel dumb, they act out again, and then they're back in in-school suspension again, and now they're falling behind. That's the cycle. And then they keep acting out escalation, and now they're kicked out of school, and now they're subject to joining gangs, robbing from you, breaking into your homes. Do you see this cycle, those of you who are so afraid on Nextdoor about who's roaming your neighborhoods? You can intervene with an ounce of prevention. You could be asking your state house and state senator to better fund teacher pay and mental health. Right now, we are on the six-year anniversary of the historic teacher walkout. Teacher pay is around $36,000, which is why many of your teachers are going to Kansas and Texas to teach. So, not only do you not have the mental health counselors that you need, you also do not have the teachers that you need. How many of you know how many of your teachers are emergency certified versus how many of them went to school for four years for a bachelor's degree to teach your children properly? Did you know we have still a record teacher shortage and nothing has really changed? Did you know that? I know that, because that's how passionately I care about this project called public education. Some of the people who don't like this topic do not send their children to public schools. They homeschool them. Did you ever ask yourself why you do that? It's because your children don't have the supports they need. So, Mayor, I hear you. I do. Please, believe me, I hear you and your gratitude toward the chief and police for being able to access cameras after a NEX Benedict happens, after a Zack in Mustang happens. I, as the first teacher on this council, though, it is my duty to articulate how to protect our children from the front end before these incidents occur. And it is beyond frustrating to me that every time I speak about this on this council, every single time, every single time, too many of my colleagues up here, eye rolls or laughter or on their phones. I am citing to you Politico an article called, for those of you who want to see what I'm seeing, "Professors Found What Creates Mass Shooters." Will politicians pay attention? Dig in, it's peer-reviewed research. It's not Facebook groups. It's peer-reviewed research. Dig in, buckle up, and then advocate. But this is just something that will make you feel better, this vote today. It will make you feel better, but it's an illusion. It's an illusion. It is an illusion. The real things, and you will hear it in that article when you read it, the real things that will keep your children safe would actually be these mental health counselors. And did you know, and I'll conclude by saying this, there is an actual dollar sign of how much it would cost to do this? Quote, "If you assume a modest salary of $70,000 a year for a mental health counselor, it would cost this country $35 billion in funding to achieve this sort of safety for our children." $35 billion. How much have we sent to Ukraine, which I support, but how much have you sent? We find that money miraculously. $35 billion in funding for the modest salary of $70,000 a year. That's $10,000 more than I make as a professor combined with my city council, $12,000 a year. I make $50,000 as a college professor, okay? And then $12,000 as a city council person. I don't receive corrupt money. I do this because I love it that much, and that's how much I think our kids' lives are at stake. That's what you could be advocating for. 500,000 psychologists employed in schools around the country, $70,000 a year, $35 billion in funding. I want to thank Mark Stonecypher and Todd Stone, because they served with me on the legislative committee. So, too, I want to thank you, Mayor, because you all joined me in advocacy, and I will be grateful till the end of time in championing mental health funding from the federal government. And I remember, Councilman Stone, you were just adamant. You were like, and what about for adults also, not just for our children? And you're exactly right. You're exactly right. I will not sit up here and pretend that I don't have the answers based on research on how to protect our children. I won't do it. And I will not sit up here and cast a vote that makes us feel good when it is not doing the ounce of prevention that would go further.
And Councilman, $70,000, man, that would be great if our counselors in Oklahoma made that much money, to your point about your own experience with, with your salary. And I just, I want to add, and I really thank you for all those comments, because I think that is such a good diagnosis and prescription for things we could be focusing on and that, you know, I, the idea that a vote against this is a vote against safety is a little insulting, because I know a lot of parents who also want their kids to be safe, and the thing that they want their kids to be safe from is police violence, police abuse of power. And even just yesterday, I was in an event where a gentleman shared a story of, he was substitute teaching at a school on the East Side. He's a retired teacher, still goes to substitute when he's available, and learned that there was a lot of traffic problems in the area of just traffic jams at certain times of the day. So, the principal requested OKCPD come out and help, help with directing that traffic, and then turned around and had to request that OKCPD no longer do that, because they were arresting people at a very high rate, higher rate than, you know, was probably, I guess, worth the trouble of the various traffic, the need for traffic control. I was on jury duty once, and there was a gentleman, a young man, just out of OKCPS school, mentioned the school that he went to, was a school in my ward, and in the questioning that he received to determine during voir dire, expressed that, and was immediately kicked from the jury, because he expressed that the SRO in his school that he had just graduated from made him feel less safe at his school as a student there. So, if we're going to talk about safety, I think we really need to think about what safety means, and I think, Councilman, you really outlined what safety can look like, and it is the meeting of needs, the engagement, and bringing people and students, in this particular instance, into engagement and talking about the things that are going on to make them act in certain ways or make them choose certain behaviors. I think what, I would like to make a motion to defer this item until, because I think, you know, it, I feel like I would not be doing my due diligence, maybe if I didn't at least get a copy of these policies that might make me feel a different way about this item. So, I'd like to maybe defer this to two weeks, for two weeks, and maybe in the meantime, we can get a copy of those policies and revisit the discussion.
It's been a while since we tried the system. Do we want to give it a shot? Okay, just a, is there like a reboot or anything that should be attempted?
I think they already did it.
They already did that? Okay, wait. Oh, does that? Okay. Is it working? Cast your votes? This is a motion to defer item nine. This is a motion to defer item 9A. Fails three to five. We're back on the items. Are there any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I do. Chief, I know your wife is a teacher, and go back to what I said to the mayor, I know you have children in the school districts. Please, I hope you understand that when I make these comments, they're not personal. They are to true, and you and I have talked for five years from this capacity. I am doing the best I can to take that extra burden off of your wife who needs her focus teaching, right? And to better protect George and Maggie too, Mayor, so just.
Okay, I'm told that if we do verbal seconds, then the system may work. So that may be where we're at. So is there a electronic motion to adopt item 9A? And then, oh, okay, we got a, all right, cast your votes. Passes five to three. Okay, we're now back on the consent docket, and we're moving through. We have a citizen who signed up to speak on item K, Michael Washington.
Not going to quiet me up though. Authorize the purchase of body armor and ballistic products from state contract so-and-so, so-and-so series of numbers and effervence estimated to cost $1,500,000 retroactive to March 16, 2024 through March 15, 2025. Now ladies and gentlemen of this illustrious horseshoe setting, and of course, my illustrious guests in office, you're going to need $1,500,000 for body armor. Hey, well, hold up, and ballistic, now wait a minute, y'all, hold up. I must be missing an episode of USI or whatever they call that on TV I'm watching, FBI and all that. You want body armor, ballistic products, estimated at 1.5 million. Now, is this just half of what it's really going to cost, or is really just the actual cost? Now y'all know how that goes. Oh, we didn't think about little Johnny having a tanning shoe, a nail and shoe, whatever the case is. So we need to put a little bit more in this because we didn't think about the hats we're going to need, or the security boots we're going to need. Okay, now hold up, man. Maybe, let me stretch it, maybe if you can reduce that to maybe half the cost, and let me see beforehand what it's going to be used for. It's not a security measure, problem one, because it's just about wearing body armor and ballistics and things of that nature. Ballistic products. What ballistic products are we talking about? What body armor are we talking about? You didn't hear me. Are we talking about Tinkle toy suits? I'm trying to ask y'all this. I don't know. It's all I see here is authorize the purchase of body armor. Is that a robot suit? (mumbling) Come and see me. I don't know. Is it going to be computer-generated? And the ballistics products? What are we talking about here, man? We, the people, have a right to be determined and to understand what's going on in our government.
Thirty seconds, please.
That's called being, uh-oh, Amy, stop that. Amy does it good. No, man, come on, y'all. We have a right to be transparent here. You can't just get out of numbers and tell us to take it. I know they are a part of the city government, true enough, but remember now, we vote in and we vote out. I want everybody to know that. Now, if y'all wasn't letting me supervise a lot of this stuff, a lot of things, it'd be much more better than running our government. I guarantee I'll save y'all money and.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hammond, you wanted to speak to item 9AC?
I guess Debbie, can you start by just sort of describing what this step in this project is, and then I think I have some questions.
Debbie Miller with Public Works Department. I can answer any questions you have on item AC.
So this is a engineering service contract for this new sort of potential roundabout that's coming towards six over at 10th and Penn slash Virginia, sort of that coupleway intersection. I was looking back at some of the, or rather, someone I know was looking back at the, some of the recommendations for, like, the preliminary report for the project, and pointed out that there was a request to remove raised sidewalks, or not raised sidewalks, raised crosswalks as part of the project, and I just kind of want to understand, like, why that was and kind of if there's opportunities to sort of add something like that back in. Because when I think about that, especially in a roundabout, especially in the new days of a roundabout, you know, the safety for pedestrians that would be traversing that, seems like a raised crosswalk would help add a lot of opportunity for better visibility, slower, you know, crossing of automobiles over that. And I'm just kind of curious if you can kind of shed some light on why that request was made and what next steps.
I believe it probably had to do with the configuration of the, we're calling it a peanut because it's an interesting roundabout. And I can get you more information of exactly why that was removed, but I would think it would have something to do with that.
Okay, that would be great. I'd really appreciate that. And I know, I think we have one of our one-on-one meetings coming up in the next few weeks, so maybe we can kind of dig into that a little bit more then as well. So thank you.
May I, when that happens, I know it's your Ward Councilwoman, but if it's not overstepping my Ward boundary too much, I have an interest in wanting to learn a little bit more about the possibility of the raised crosswalk there. If not here at this intersection, I'd like to kind of better understand the thinking from our city's, you know, chief engineer about where that might be possible, especially as we start thinking about future bond projects. Because I really worry about what happens when we go below the grade of the sidewalk, what we could be doing, you know, I can assure you, a number, top five concern in Ward Two from a majority of residents is traffic calming, and so I'm really interested in how those raised crosswalks could help us achieve that in some kind of key intersection. So I'd like to kind of learn what's going on a little bit more, what the pros and cons are. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Cooper, item AF.
Speaking of traffic calming and safety, if you could provide us a little bit of an update, and I'll just say before you do, as I've mentioned previous from this horseshoe, if you were to Google right now, unfortunately, Oklahoma City and Portland, you would see where a woman was hit by three different vehicles within the last year in her wheelchair trying to cross Portland, right? This is the sort of tragic event that happened. So when I talk about traffic calming, that's not, it's just, it's something I care about, but it is truly a need. So if you wouldn't mind just giving us an update on this project and what this is going to do for this area.
Sure. This project will construct sidewalks on both sides of the street, and it will provide a light at 29th, 30th.
47?
27th, well, at 27th, then also up there across where the apartments are. That's where the most of the pedestrian traffic is going from the apartments over to the park. So we've actually got improved pedestrian improvements there with an actual signal that they'll be able to push and stop traffic and be able to cross. So, and we are on track for this to start this summer in construction and be done next year.
That's great. Well, thank you so much. Clearly, it matters, and I'm sure those skyline neighborhood residents are going to be thrilled to be able to safely walk across the street to a gem like rural Rogers. So thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a presentation for item AV.
Yes. Chief Kelly is going to give us an update on this item, just an explanation of what we're doing with our supplemental service with EMSA, this is the agreement with EMSA.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I'm Richard Kelly, Fire Chief, and what I'm going to discuss with you today is the EMS Supplemental Services Contract between the City of Oklahoma City and EMSA. And I'd also like to thank Jana Easley, who's the CEO of EMSA here today with us, and appreciate her leadership team and the leadership team of the Fire Department working hard together to make this come to fruition. So I'm going to give you a quick overview. Obviously, the mission statement here, it just falls in our mission statement. It's important to note that we're here to meet the need of our citizens, our residents, and so we feel this falls right in line with the operations of what we do within the Fire Department. And I want to give you a continuation of the program and kind of give you an update going back to how the program is going to be laid out, all the way into how the contract plays into that. So real quick, the Supplemental Medical Transport Program, this is what we talked about last year and you funded in our budget. We're adding four advanced life support transport services at Fire Station 9, 21, 22, and 34. I'll show you on a map here in a second what that actually looks like, the coverage areas. That was a collaboration of working with Fire and EMSA to identify those locations. Some of them are challenging, difficult areas to meet, those priority one response times. So it's an effort working together to try to improve those services and work together in that collaboration. This is the staffing positions that we have. We've currently hired the majority of those, so we still have a few more paramedics to reach out and hire. We've had a really good return on our applicant pool, had about 70 applicants, but we're still working through that process. And we're in our academy right now with 16 EMTs and eight paramedics. The next one I'll show you is the layout, actually, and this is all our fire stations, and I highlighted in blue where we'll have our four EMS, advanced life support transport units, where those will be the primary location. Different times of the day depend on the status, how many units we have, they may have to move around the city, but we've worked together with EMSA in that process to make sure that we can try to house them at those fire stations, but we got to make sure we provide that good coverage throughout the city. Then a reminder of the program, just some background on it. The model that we're following is historically what EMSA's done in the past for an operator. We're going to be working with them under the trust and dim sure and interlocal agreement that was, obviously, that's been updated and allow this process to take place. Most importantly, we want to make sure residents ensure that they have response time, adequate response time. So we're going to fall within the same response time requirements that EMSA is required to meet at this time. So our goal is to obviously bolster that and try to help in that area, but we have to follow those same guidelines as well. So we got to make sure that we're doing that. And we're going to follow the medical director's guidelines that we have established for patient care. That's the most important area that we want to make sure that we have that high-quality patient care with these units that we're putting in service. And the overall goal of this is to increase capacity within the system and to make sure that we have that continuity of operation as a city for the transport services. So again, that's important as we go through that. The way it's going to be, the way it's going to work is EMSA will actually dispatch all the units. You want to make sure that ease of operation, so they're going to dispatch our units, and they're going to dispatch the closest unit. We want to make sure we get the closest services to the patient in need at the time, so you're still going to follow that process. There's going to be the same performance matrix because we don't have two distinct separate guidelines. So performance matrix that we'll follow is time on task. We want to make sure that we get the time on task at 70 minutes or less and make sure we get that done in appropriate time so we can get those units back in service. Hospital destination, time management, how long we're at the hospital, and then out-of-shoot time, that's how fast we get out. We're going to follow the same metrics that EMSA follows in that, so make sure that we're getting to the patient quickly, providing the necessary treatment, getting in the hospital, and turn that patient over. So it's going to be important we follow those same guidelines. And then, as I said earlier, the same clinical requirements will be for our units as it is that we currently have within our system. All our paramedics within the system currently follow the same clinical guidelines, but these EMS transport units will follow one of the same clinical guidelines as EMSA. What allows us to, again, go into this supplemental contract is the change in the Second Amendment to the trust and dim sure that you all were approved, the Board of EMSA Trustees also approved, the reinstated interlocal agreement, which allows beneficiary cities to provide this EMS service. But what we have for you today is we have to have that approved contract for special arrangements. So that's important that we have this, it's part of the requirements of that. The contract for special arrangements that we have today has already been approved by the EMSA Board of Trustees, so it comes up for you today for your approval. Just a real quick overview of the contract, the way it's going to be laid out, the scope of that. The city agrees we'll furnish all the labor, material supplies, and all the management for our units to properly perform that priority one and priority two ambulance service. And then the term of the contract's going to be for one year. This portion will be just till the end of this fiscal year, and then subsequently from that beginning on the fiscal year, we'll go from that July 1st to June 30th every year. So we stay in step of that, that same guidelines, timelines. The contract also lays out the supplies, equipment, pharmaceuticals, obviously, will bear that cost as the Fire Department for those EMS transport units, and EMSA will bear the cost of their units. So we just wanted that clear delineation within the contract so everyone's clear on that. And then for the purposes, we're providing a supple, the way the contract is laid out as independent contractor status, for the purpose of providing this, we're going to be contracting with EMSA. It does require, the way the law is laid out, EMSA is the sole provider of EMS services within our city, so we have to subcontract with them. So this is that contract before you approving that for us to be a subcontractor with EMSA. And then the termination, obviously, there's a termination of either party should have the right to terminate the contract with or without cause at any time upon 180 days' written notice. This is actually laid out within the agreement. And then the, EMSA has a right to terminate the contract arising from our failure to meet response timelines. If we don't meet those, then they can actually terminate the contract. And that's the way it's laid out with us already with EMSA currently in our trust and dim sure, or in our interlocal agreement. One part that is required on this, we will actually bill for services. We looked at different structures, how we could do this, a fee structure, but we ended up falling where we had to do a billing for service. So these units, we will actually do our own billing for service on these four units. And we have contracted that came before you and was approved with Digitech, and they're going to bill for services, which will allow us to transport our patients to the hospital, bill for services. We will still use the EMSA Care model that's already laid out with EMSA. So all of, anyone that's transported, whether it be a fire unit or an EMSA unit, will be able to use the EMSA Care process if they live in the city and have the utility bill, and we have all that laid out. Estimated, we'll probably run about 14,000 calls once we get that in service, obviously, we're going to learn from that. And then our revenues will be deposited in the Medical Services Fund that we currently have our EMSA Care funds in. So that kind of gives you a quick overview of the contract for services, but at this time, I'll entertain any questions. Thank you, appreciate your time, and thanks for your continued support.
One question real quick. On the 14,000 calls, do you see that increasing over time as we go forward, or is that something we're going to?
I would think historically, just because we're seeing increased call volume in the city, and those are historically busy areas of our city, I think you would see that increase. Obviously, we're working together with EMSA to try to identify ways to decrease call volume, but unfortunately, what we're seeing right now is a steady increase in our call volume throughout the entire city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
All right, we're ready now to adopt the consent docket.
Mayor, my apologies. I wanted to mention item V, that is also on our docket, real quick. And just a quick comment, I understand we're now going through change order 18, and this is my concern with us taking the lowest bid, while I'm very grateful, because during COVID, this was something that we were able to get all of our ad alternates included with this particular project. Here we are, six months later, still doing all of these additions and amendments and change orders, whereas for our center, this is costing our families, our kids, depending on what those uses are and need to be. So I really hope we would start looking at how to take the best bid instead of taking the lowest bid, because it's going to continue to cost us in the end as we continue to work through this. I mean, I'm grateful that we're going to have these additions and these corrections because these are ADA things that need to be corrected, but as I was there last month and talking to some of the staff, there are still quite a few other things that are not intact for them to fully get the great use that they need to out of this particular center. So I just want to continue to mention that. I know we've talked about it before, but I think these continued change orders continue to speak to that when we're six months after the fact of this project being completed and opened for the public, and we're still doing these change orders.
Okay. All right, now we can adopt the consent docket except for the item previously approved. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, item 10, the concurrents docket, we have items A through N, we can take with one We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11, items requiring separate votes. Item 11A is ordinance on final hearing, it was recommended for approval, rezoning 4228 Northeast 20th from R1 to R2, Councilwoman Nice.
Has anyone signed up to speak?
They have not.
Okay. I do see this is to allow two family residential duplex within this part of our community, so with that, I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item B was previously withdrawn. Item C is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval, rezoning 2141 Southwest 21st Street from SPOD 110 to SPOD 1577. Councilwoman Hammond, no one has signed up to speak.
I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item D is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 1107 North Purdue from R1 to SPOD 1595. Councilman Carter will carry it for Ward 3, and no one has signed up to speak.
No one?
Nope.
Okay, we move for approval.
We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item E is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, establishing a special permit to operate use unit 8300.68, Spectator Sports and Entertainment High-Impact Rodeo in the AA Agricultural District at 4905 North Morgan Road. Councilman Carter, no one has signed up to speak.
I am actually really intrigued, and I kind of want to hear some more about this. Not every day I get to see about a rodeo being put in, so.
Good morning, Caitlin Turner, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. So, yes, this is for a rodeo, and it is my first rodeo. This got brought to us, at first, the owners were trying to seek a noise permit, they thought they needed some kind of permit. Due to just lack of guidance, they were seeking the wrong one, so we are here before you today with this application to allow for a rodeo use. It's equestrian, they already have existing equestrian facilities on site, and the program description, we've listed hours of operation and days when they're allowed to host these events, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
I see that it's recommended for approval but subject to technical evaluations, what were those?
That was to incorporate the program description, so the program description will be controlling if they were ever to host an event on a Friday instead of a Saturday, then it would be called and reported.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, then I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item F is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval, closing a portion of the north-south alley west of Lot 22 in Scotts Edition, south of Northwest 14th. This was deferred from March 12th, and Councilwoman Hammond, we have a couple people have signed up to speak.
Can we have the applicant come up and describe it first, and then, or is one of the people the applicant?
Well, it's Richard Labarth and David Darlaw.
Yeah. Oh, Caitlin, so of course Caitlin. Okay, yeah, if you want to start, and yeah, we can.
Caitlin Turner, 522 Call Core Drive, excuse me, I will say that those that are signed up to speak are the property owners, so they just signed up as a caution to safeguard their time if there are any questions that you all have. But, portion of an alley closure, there have been multiple alleys in this area that have been closed to clean up the area to allow for development. This closing application was actually a condition on the CA when this went before DDRC, so we're just complying with that condition, so this is kind of the last step to begin development.
Yeah, and I don't have any questions, your email kind of providing a little background was helpful, but yeah, I think I've met with the applicants before, so unless there are other questions for them, I'm happy to move for approval.
We have a motion and a second, cast your votes when you are able. Passes unanimously. Okay, item G is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval, closing a portion of the east-west right-of-way of Northwest 26th, east of North Military and west of Northwestern. Councilman Cooper, no one has signed up to speak.
Caitlin Turner, last time, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. So, this application is to correct an encroachment that occurred due to a survey issue. It's a bit unique, because 26th Street, excuse me, which, this is just north of the Supercow Win on Klassen. It's actually an 80-foot right-of-way, which is much larger than the standard 60-foot right-of-way, so there's really no adverse impact by this closing application. We're still 20 feet back from the existing sidewalk there along 26th, so this application is more of a cleanup than anything.
Great, I've been long looking at this development and waiting for it to come online, so I appreciate this update, and I'll move for approval.
We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item H is an ordinance on final hearing, establishing reserved parking for the physically disabled on the north side of Northwest 9th, near Hudson. Councilwoman Hammond?
Yes, I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item I is an ordinance on final hearing, establishing a reserved parking space for the physically disabled on the west side of North Hudson, near 11th. Councilwoman Hammond?
I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Items J, K, L, and M were previously approved, which brings us to item N. This is an ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing on April 9th and a final hearing on April 23rd relating to motor vehicles and traffic. Do we have a presentation on this?
Debbie Miller with Public Works Department. This item is to modify the ordinances to allow the city manager to assign employees to provide parking enforcement authority, embark, and the police service.
You're good.
Are wanting to authorize some of their personnel to do parking enforcement along the streetcar and within the downtown area.
Thanks, Debbie. Go ahead.
Do you want me to add a little bit to that? So, good morning, Mayor and Council, Jason Fairbrush, Assistant City Manager, Director of the Public Transportation and Parking Department, and thanks a lot, Debbie, for introducing this, your comments. I just try to fill in a couple of the blanks, only because this proposed ordinance change actually goes back to the parking study that was presented to council back in the 2019-2020 timeframe, where when we as a city engaged stakeholders, one of the things we had heard through some focus groups and just directly from stakeholders was really just how can we enhance the existing parking enforcement efforts that are provided downtown? And so, the ordinance change that is presented to you today, I would characterize it generally as kind of a cleanup of some language within the ordinance, but it also does, in particular Section 3247, clarify the authority of the police service tax, while also at the same time recognizing that there's now a parking enforcement technician within the Public Transportation and Parking Department that can also enforce parking. So, really, with the approval of this ordinance, that would allow the employees within the Public Transportation and Parking Department that have been designated with that title to be able to supplement the existing police department parking enforcement efforts. And so, that's really what we're trying to accomplish today, introducing this item. Of course, we'll bring it back for a public hearing, and then it looks like a final hearing April 23rd.
Thank you.
All right, well, if there's no questions or comments, we could introduce the ordinance for consideration. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, ordinance is introduced, there'll be a public hearing on April 9th and a final hearing April 23rd. O1 is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed. It looks like we do have someone who's signed up to speak, Sheila Jarvis. And this is, looks to be in reference to item A, 5012 South Bypass Terrace. Don't you come to the center, if you don't mind, thank you.
Please don't condemn the house. My mom left us this house, she died August 29th, and the house caught fire November 11th, and it's now in probate, but I just recently got possession of the house, and I've started the remodels and I cleaned up, cleaned up the whole outside already, and I've got building supplies to redo the house. Please don't tear it down.
So, this is in my ward, hi. I'm going to ask to have us defer this so that you can speak with Chad over here, he's the code.
I'm sorry, I can't.
Oh, sorry, here, let me, I know this sometimes when it's not near my mouth. So, I'm, this is in my ward, I'm going to ask if we can defer this item so that there's a little more time for you to talk with code enforcement. It sounds like if you've now have possession of the house and are able to show them a plan that you're working on whatever the items they've, they found that aren't in compliance, then they can remove it at a later date, so I would like to defer this for two weeks.
And I would like to also, while we're deferring item E as well.
And then, you can speak with Chad over here, he can kind of talk about what the next steps are to make sure that they know the work that you've been doing to abate the different items they have.
Okay, thank you so much.
Amy Kenny, can we do one vote on those two deferrals together? I don't see why not. Okay, so we're deferring items A and E, both items for two weeks. That would be the motion. Okay? Yep. Got a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, sorry, Councilman Carter.
You're fine, I was going to ask to also defer item B.
Item what again?
B.
Okay.
But I'd like this deferred to June 4th, please.
Would have needed to be separate anyways, so, great, thank you. So, we need a motion to defer item B, O1B for until June 4th. Got a motion and a second. Passes unanimously. Okay, no one else has signed up to speak on this hearing, are there any other items to defer? Hearing none, we'll tick up the resolution, found at item 2, declaring that the structures are dilapidated, except for those previously deferred. Got a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item P1 is a public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed. Item A was previously struck, as was item I. Are any of our just deferred items reappear here? Doesn't look like it. No one else has signed, no one has signed up to speak on this hearing, so we could advance to the resolution, found at item 2, declaring that structures are unsecured. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, on Q1, Councilwoman Hammond, you will probably want to defer item A for two weeks.
And item I?
Item I for two weeks. Why don't we do that vote, and then we'll probably, I assume, return to item F for Councilman Carter, but that's a different date, so why don't we take them in separate votes? So, this vote will be for items A and I, to defer them for two weeks. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Councilman Carter, you do wish to defer item F?
Yes.
Till June 4th?
Yes, please. And I know there's a lot of addresses here, so I just want to be real clear, this is an apartment complex.
Oh, wait, it is item F.
That had caught fire.
Goes on and on and on.
They've gotten everything kind of done, they're securing funding, and then they're going to be transitioning this actually into affordable housing for our area, so I'd really like to give them the opportunity to do that.
Okay, so we have a motion for item Q1F, to defer it till June 4th. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. No one has signed up to speak, so we'll advance to the resolution declaring that the buildings are abandoned, found at Q2. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. 0.1233 acres of real estate, of real property, near northeast 63rd and Kelly, a surplus for park purposes. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak on this public hearing?
No, they haven't.
Okay, so we will close this public hearing in advance to item S, which we already adopted, and which brings us then to item T. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item U, executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item V is just an executive session, this is an executive session to receive confidential communications from our attorney concerning the case of Hendricks v. Clicka. We'll take a vote and then handle that at the end of our other business. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, we will, again, handle that executive session a little later. Item W1, claims recommended for approval, executive session is not requested, we can handle the claims with one vote. Motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and that concludes our votes for the day. Item 12, comments from council, Ward 1.
Yes, sir, just real quick, I want to give a really big shout-out to our police department, our fire department, and our Emsa. I got a, I got a call Sunday, nobody wants to get, my son's, we're involved in a pretty good car accident. And if it hadn't been for the quick response from our law enforcement, fire department, Emsa, helping me even with just the understanding and comfort of this, I don't know, you know, kind of how we would have handled it, but I just want to give them a huge thanks, I got to see it firsthand and be a part of that, and it really just changed the atmosphere of everything that went on. And I'd also like to put out our prayers right now for the people of Baltimore, after the bridge collapsed early this morning, being struck by a cargo ship, and the lives that are potentially lost with the people that they still haven't been able to find, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ward 2.
Thank you, Mayor, and let me just say, I'm glad that your son is safe, and I can't imagine that phone call, so I'm sorry you had to go through that, but also glad that everyone's safe. Just real quick, I see Dan Strong here, and I saw him also about a week ago on the front page of The Oklahoman, because I think you're doing something that I don't even know as a millennial I'll get to experience, it's one word. don't even know as a millennial I'll get to experience. It's a one word, retirement? So, City Manager Freeman and I were on a phone call talking about the community benefits agreement the day that you were on the front page. And we couldn't, we didn't even get into the CBA conversation at the start of the call, because I think we probably spent, I don't know, 10, 20 minutes talking about your work. I'm not, and I, I don't think that's an exaggeration. And it wasn't just me doing the talking either, Mayor. It was... No, both Craig and I expressed just gratitude, because you educated each of us. Even though Craig and I come from a bit different of a political part of the ideological spectrum, your patience with us in separate conversations explaining what the root causes of homelessness are, how we can identify that as the problem, and then identify those solutions, the housing first solutions. When I ran five years ago, you'll recall, I mean, I'd never, I didn't even know what the Homeless Alliance was. I just knew I wanted to do something about homelessness. And I made that part of my political campaign. I had a feeling housing and mental health services and connections to substance abuse and addiction services were part of that, but I didn't know the term housing first. I, I did not know that philosophy. I didn't know the term housing readiness either. But there I went to Homeless Alliance, and you and your staff were patient and gracious, and you walked me through each of the different service providers which exist under your, your roof there. And then you showed me the transitional housing that you all do. You showed me, you introduced me to the term permanent supportive housing, and the idea that you can't just build someone a house who's been under a bridge for seven years with schizophrenia, right? One must stabilize them by putting them in the housing first, but then connecting them to those important community wraparound services, that, that stability, right, that might not have existed for all seven years under the bridge. They probably burnt a lot of bridges along the way, right? And in a state with some of the highest childhood traumas in the country. You made that connection for me. You explained to me how it is that someone finds themselves unhoused. You explained the connection to evictions, which unfortunately both Councilman Carter and I have zip codes with some of the highest eviction rates in Oklahoma county, not city, but county, right? And you helped explain that faucet, that eviction, once someone gets evicted from their home, you're talking about your teachers, your social workers, you're not talking about people who are lazy layabouts that the property owners kick them out. You're talking about people one, two paychecks away from not being able to pay their bills. And you connected those dots and what happens when someone finds themselves evicted and then suddenly living under a bridge. You connected the dot for me that our own affordable housing studies showed where, you know, we have 19,400 Oklahoma citizens in need of one to two-bedroom housing, whether that's apartments or a home. And we only have 3,600. The demand is much greater than the supply. And you said, okay, if you get evicted, now your credit's ruined. If you get evicted, and even if your credit wasn't ruined, into which unit are you going? And you just connected all those dots in a very patient, practical way. And you always had data to support what you were doing. And you were there for the council members who would wake up, sometimes a little late, because that's just who I am, but wake up to be at the point in time count annually at four o'clock in the morning, six o'clock in the morning, to go out and actually survey people who are unhoused under I-44 in Penn, right? And you, again, patience. And I just, I can't thank you enough for it. And to say we will miss you in your leadership capacity would be the understatement of 2024. But someone on Instagram shared a meme recently, in fact, it was my, now that I think about it, my Ward four, excuse me, Ward two, sorry, Todd, Ward two Maps four, see what happened there, Representative Chelsea Banks. She said, "Leadership is not just taking the lead and doing it all yourself. Leadership is planting the seeds where other people become leaders around you." And that's what you did. You have put ideas with reason and logic and research out there, and you made sure that we had access to that research and that data that got you to where you are. And now I suspect you have leaders all across homelessness services. And I know you have one in Ward two, and it sounds like many other Ward two residents. We've heard what you've said. We know that housing first is the way out of this housing crisis, this homelessness crisis. And I don't think we would have fully understood the weight of the problem and the potential of the solutions to get us to what you all call functional zero. Grateful for what you have done. You have helped undo the people out there who say these folk did it to themselves. You have helped undo the language, where I still hear people say, when they refer to someone experiencing homelessness, they say, "The homeless." They say, I, I even heard the governor of Florida say, "I'm passing a law that will ban people from experiencing a homeless when they're walking on the street." There was a word missing there, a homeless person. And that's how you get to that backwards policy. You introduced the humanity back to this important conversation. And I will be forever grateful for what you've done. Thank you.
Ward four? Ward five?
As a newbie, I'm almost a year in. I had the opportunity to attend the board meeting for the Community Action Agency. And what a unique organization. I just want to shout out to them, thank them for feeding me Johnny Carino's and teaching me what they do. But if you don't know who they are, look them up. They do a great service for Oklahoma City. That's all.
Thanks. Ward six?
Yeah, I'd like to thank a constituent of mine who works at the College of Pharmacy over at OU's Health Science Center campus, invited me to come speak to a student group yesterday on, he had seen information about the city's installation of one of the Department of Mental Health Marcan and fentanyl testing strip vending machines at our downtown transit center, and wanted to hear more, have, have their students have the opportunity to hear more about that effort and initiative, as well as other opportunities for these soon-to-be pharmacists to be involved in community-based programs to increase access to harm reduction for people who use drugs. And it was a really neat opportunity to hear a little bit more about the, the barriers and obstacles they face in their own field, and some of the things that they're interested in changing policy-wise to make access to that healthcare more available. But also, you know, really want to give a big thank you and shout out to all the folks within Embark and the Department of Mental Health who worked to make that possible. And I know multiple other entities around the city are, are working to install those and make that access more widely available. But just wanted to give that shout out to the, the transit folks for, you know, letting folks know that, letting them know that folks take it, take notice of those things. And people from kind of all different sectors and corners of the community want to know how they can be involved in supporting those efforts. So just thank you to them for, I know it wasn't hard, you know, trying to figure out where do we put it? How do you plug it in? You know, what's all the logistics around hosting an initiative like that. But really appreciate them pursuing that partnership with the Department of Mental Health and, and look forward to more opportunities to incorporate those sorts of innovative partnerships into city, city projects going forward. Thanks.
Thanks. Ward seven?
Yes, a couple things. First, I want to say hopefully some who can will be able to join us as we cut the ribbon for Expedition Africa at the zoo today. This is an exciting venture and project that I think all of us can, can get around because of the innovative ways we'll be able to interact with the animals. So I'm very excited to see it. I know a lot of us have been a part of different processes of this coming into fruition for myself and some other community members, the art piece that is engaged in Expedition Africa. It is an interesting piece, I will tell you that. So when you see it, you will know it. But I, I hope we all can again just be excited about how our, our leadership and, and the, the folks that work and are employed at the zoo are able to do some, some really cool things. I know for the weather is not going to be favorable as far as it being cold outside to cut a ribbon, but hopefully, hopefully we'll be able to say hello to maybe one or two animals today with that. I also wanted to say congratulations to Restore OKC. Restore OKC just received a $2 million grant from Mackenzie Scott. And she basically, they said, the community-led nonprofit, this one was selected to receive funding for their outstanding work advancing the voices and opportunities of individuals and families of meager or modest means who have met with discrimination and other systemic obstacles. So they are vital agents of change. So I, I always commend Restore OKC on how they are working with our community. When I was elected in 2018, this was one of my very first zoning, zoning cases, because they were working to help create and establish their, their farm on this property. And as we've seen, it has flourished and in our community is thriving through different ways of, of Restore OKC within this part of loving on our neighbors as well as the school district around it. I wanted to also say thank you to Justin Henry and Max Harris. Last week, they joined me last Wednesday at, on Lottie. And I know within the last couple of weeks, I've been talking about this with our bike lanes that are coming online for our city, especially within northeast Oklahoma City. We have some concerns. And I was asking and have been asking that we continue the educational process. And the reason I'm, I'm continuing to ask for that is because now we have a striped Lottie with cars still traveling down those stripes because there's no signage. We've had cars being subject to being hit by other cars driving. And while Mr. Henry and Mr. Harris and I were walking to our cars on one of those striped lanes, a senior gentleman honked at us and told us to move. And we were in that protected lane. And I had to advise him, "Sir, this is one lane. Go that way." And he said, "No, it's two," as he proceeded to go around us and drive down that lane until he got over to turn. So these are some, again, issues that I want to publicly say that they are not being ignored. I understand there had been a conversation on, on the radio about it. And we are working to address those concerns, because believe me when I say, for me to see it for myself and actually engage with those residents that were around that area, we need to do something different in order to protect our, our residents and our drivers, especially when people are used to going down, having two lanes, and you're immediately compacted to one without understanding this is why. Those can be concerns. And we're about to embark on another part of northeast Oklahoma City. We're, we're about to do the same thing. So we're going to have to figure something different out on how we communicate and better educate our, our residents on, on how this works. But I still want to thank them for their patience and for listening to my neighbors as they talked about what their concerns were. And hopefully we'll be able to address that. Two more things. I wanted to send my condolences on this platform. I, I did it on social media to, we know him publicly as Santa Blair. I know a lot of our community knows him as Coach Blair. And it was very unexpected. And that is the unfortunate thing that happens when grief and death comes knocking at our door. A lot of times it's very unexpected. So to his, his, his family, his children, and to our community, I offer my sincerest thoughts. And to our city and to our, our country, because it was, one of the things I posted, it is, is you become a kid again when you're in the presence of, of Santa Blair. And I know a lot of our community, we don't get to see representation of a Santa that looks like us. I grew up with one at my church, so I knew what one, but Santa Blair was different. He was different for our community. He was different for our city. And when he took that Santa suit off, he was still a person, as in Coach Blair, mentoring our kids, talking to our kids, and loving on our kids and our community. So it, it was a dual hat that he wore. And I, this is a tremendous loss for our community and for our city. And I just remember the pictures that were taken when he went to go to The View around Christmas last year. And I think Whoopi sat on his lap or he sat on hers, one of the two. But just the joy of all of the cast, how excited they were to even see Santa Blair. And when he went to Times Square, the kids were like, "Santa, Santa." So it's those things that, that this particular person was able to do, not only for our kids in our community, but for kids around the nation. So that, again, my, my thoughts to his family. Lastly, I want to say Langston University, my HBCU, is playing for the NAIA championship tonight on ESPN3 at 7:00 PM. This is the first time in school history that they will be playing for this title. That's why I'm wearing my Dear Langston pin today, because I'm sending them all the good wishes in Kansas City. They played the first round in Langston a couple of weeks ago. We were able to watch them for the first round of victory on Friday night. And then that second Saturday, they had that second victory. But I think this is a great Cinderella story for bringing in Coach Wright a couple of years ago. Two seasons ago, Langston was 1-27. This year, they are 35-1. And tonight, they get to play against Freed Hardman, which is a school in Tennessee, NAIA. And again, this is the first time for our school history, my alma mater, that we get to play for this title. And I believe, and I could be mistaken, I was trying to find if I was correct or not, but an HBCU, the first time that a HBCU is playing for this title for NAIA. So these are victories for our city, because we do have a, a local Langston, OKC campus, even though the main campus is in Langston, Oklahoma. But we here in Oklahoma City get to celebrate this victory. So I hope everyone that can will watch ESPN3 at 7:00 PM. And go Langston Lions.
Thank you. Ward A?
Thank you, Your Honor. Craig, I know you touched on this earlier today, but the Moody's and S&amp;P, which is a global rating agency, you know, just came out with their reports and again gave us a triple A rating, which means we have stability long-term, is what they're saying. And I wanted to congratulate Brett Bryant, our new, what do you call him, Chief Financial Officer now, and then also Chris Browning, our Executive Director of Utilities. Couple of things that step out that you didn't mention, that stick out to me. Number one, this is the 16th year in a row we have won this award. And then secondly, the S&amp;P report is really telling on the state of our economy. It says, "Oklahoma City's economy continues to diversify, moving further from its historical focus on the energy sector. Oklahoma City continues to exhibit strong budgetary performance, supported by steady sales and used tax growth, and conservative budgeting practices." And it's those practices, I believe, that give us a stable, long-term outlook. Thank you, everyone, for making this happen.
Thank you. That concludes item 12. Now we're at item 13, Citizens to Be Heard. I'd remind everybody to state your name and address and keep your remarks to three minutes or less. First up is Dan Strong.
So, Dan Strong, 1724 Northwest Fourth Street. I, I really just wanted to come by to thank this body for 20 years of, of partnership in addressing homelessness in our community. Some of you may know that former councilwoman Ann Simank from Ward Six was a founding board member. Meg Salier, former councilwoman, fundamental in the creation of Curbside Chronicle. We, we have had an effective partnership for, for a long time. And, and I, I want to give kind of partial credit for that to, to Jim Couch. And many years ago, another front-page article, I was quoted, and my quote was, was aggravating to Mr. Couch. was aggravating to Mr. Couch. And those of you that worked with Jim know that he has kind of a, a black belt in Aschudo. And um, and he lit me up pretty good for that, for that comment and um, you know, I'm a grown ass man, I don't work for him and also kind of petty LaBelle, so I uh, I, I expressed my displeasure and um, and we butted heads a little bit. And um, not too long after that, um, I, I met with the city manager and he reminded me that we both have the same goal. We both want Oklahoma City to be the best it can be. And because of where he sits and where I sit, um, maybe 10% of the time, we're going to butt heads, but 90% of the time, we're going to move in lockstep because we have the same goal. Um, and, and that was a real lesson for me, which also, Tom Petty, I was kind of like, damn it, he's right, but um, and, and that's kind of what I think about this council. Everybody on this council has that same goal. You want Oklahoma City to be the best it can be. And because you have different perspectives, maybe sometimes on best, you, you butt heads, but, but 90% of the time, you're moving the community forward. And I just, I, I think that's rare in municipal government across the country. And I just, yeah, I just wanted to express my appreciation. I know nobody on this horseshoe is doing it for the money. And if you were doing it for the status, someone played a cruel trick on you. So, um, anyway, I just, I just wanted to take a minute to, to thank you all so very much. Thanks.
Thank you, Dan. Thanks for your service.
Hello, my name is Grant Bailey. I'm here to uh, address the Sunset Amphitheater, Pud 1983. I'm sorry, I have a, uh, allergies or kicking my butt. So just bear with that if you would. Uh, thank you, council, for all your time, mayor, and all your service that you do for Oklahoma City. I'd like to pass around a map to show where the Sunset Amphitheater is going to fall in a residential area. Is that okay? Start over here with Mark.
All right. Uh, the noise levels were increased by the Oklahoma City Planning Committee by five decibels. I don't know why they thought that was okay. Uh, how will children sleep and be prepared to succeed in school without the proper rest? People with PTSD will be greatly affected. Uh, sound checks in the school, I mean, the uh, amphitheaters are going to fall right at the back of the track at uh, Mustang North High School, I mean, Middle School. And uh, sound checks begin at 2:00 PM when school doesn't let out until, I believe, 3:45. So that will be disruptive. Uh, I also talked to Oklahoma City Police Officer and he told me that uh, his station located a mile from the zoo amphitheater, uh, the walls would vibrate during zoo concerts and it was very disruptive inside the station as far as the sound as well. Uh, I also talked to a lady uh, that lived near the fairgrounds that moved to Ward 3 to get away from it, the concert. She was about a mile away and she said her walls would literally shake and the sound was unbearable. Uh, we have lots of children, elderly citizens and veterans with PTSD that live in the surrounding neighborhoods, somewhere as close as 500 feet. Uh, they will have trouble sleeping with the noise pollution and vibrations. EPA's Clean Air Act Title IV Noise Pollution states that health effects from noise pollution adversely affects millions of people. Studies have shown that there is a direct link between noise pollution and health. Problems related to noise pollution include stress, uh, related illnesses, high blood pressure, speech interference.
30 seconds remaining.
Hearing loss and uh, sleep disruption. Uh, wow, I guess I won't get through all this for sure. Uh, concerts don't end till 10:30 at night, 11 o'clock. It'll take an hour for the parking lots to empty out. Uh, another one is about uh, emergency vehicles during all that time, so. Anyway, I would like you to vote no on April 9th.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Carl Ed.
Carl Edkin and Vice Mayor Carter presiding.
10412 Fairfax Lane, Yukon. I am here also to protest this amphitheater. I'll expand a little bit on what he said. The seating capacity is going to be 12,000. So you figure if two people go to this concert by car, now you're looking at 6,000 cars in a residential neighborhood. Our street currently is no wider than this room. Now you're going to throw in a concert that's supposed to close at 11:00 PM. Kids, babies, grandkids, all in our neighborhood and they're allowed to play this music to that late at night? On top of that, the trash cans, bottles, that's leftover, thrown out as people leave on our school grounds for the kids to have to deal with, the teachers have to deal with it. People cutting through our neighborhoods, trying to beat 6,000 cars out of the parking lot? What danger is that putting our kids and ourselves in as they're trying to speed down our streets to get ahead of the traffic? On top of the 6,000 cars, then you have people that work there, there's another 50 to 100 cars, then the semis that's bringing all the equipment as well in this neighborhood. Channel 4 last week had something on the internet about the zoo amphitheater is in danger of being shut down because they're not getting enough people to play. We have Paycom, we have Cox Center, you have uh, the Scissor Tail Park, we have all these Indian casinos which has concerts. This will do in Oklahoma City Amphitheater at the zoo.
30 seconds remaining.
So I'm requesting that y'all vote no. And if y'all would like to have a copy of the Channel 4 print-off, I have it, if anybody would like to have one. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Kenny Shelton. Um, I live at 6421 North College Avenue in Ward 1. Today I'd like to talk to you about food insecurity in Oklahoma and the misuse of Oklahoman tax dollars. Oklahoma has some of the worst food insecurity statistics in the nation. Food insecurity as defined by the USDA is a household-level economic and social condition of limited or uncertain access to adequate food. Oklahoma.gov states that it's been estimated that more than 500,000 Oklahomans are experiencing food insecurity and of these nearly 200,000 are children. One in five children face hunger in Oklahoma. Reports show 14.3%, almost a quarter of a million Oklahoma households experienced food insecurity at some point between 2020 and 2022. Oklahoma is among the top 10 states that have the highest percentages of American households who experienced hunger. Food insecurity weakens the labor force, decreases educational attainment, and increases healthcare costs in Oklahoma. 33% of Oklahomans live in a low-income, low-access community, meaning they lack adequate access to nutritious food. That number increases to 42% when looking at urban households, while 32% of rural house, rural households live with limited access. HungerFreeOK.org states that our nationwide assessment of hunger identifies underutilized programs that could help families become food secure. By not fully utilizing these crucial programs, Oklahoma leaves hundreds of millions of dollars on the table to fight hunger every year. Among underutilized and misused Oklahoma tax fu, or Oklahoma funds and tax dollars, we have the $62 million invested in Israel. Myself and many of your constituents in Oklahoma City are concerned and disapprove in funds that are desperately needed in this state for many reasons not limited to children going hungry, going to a foreign government that is illegally occupying the land and actively bombing and starving children in Gaza. Either way you look at it, Oklahoma is complicit in starving children.
30 seconds remaining.
This is devastating and fully avoidable. I am here to ask you all on the Oklahoma City Council to consider divesting from funding a foreign government, reallocating these funds to the pertinent and desperate issues in Oklahoma City and Oklahoma as a whole, and to call for a ceasefire in Palestine. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Jaclyn Shelton?
Hey, I'm Jaclyn Shelton, uh, Ward 5, 2617 Southwest 63rd Place. Um, I've come to like four of these in a row. I find them very interesting, by these, I mean, these city council meetings. I have a background in um, general contracting, so I find it really interesting that as just a regular person, I can Google how bad of a deal this stadium deal is with the Thunder. Uh, we're talking about industry standards here and the industry standard for how much the, the um, team pays versus the city pays, that's not the contract that we got. The contract that we got sucks, y'all. Um, you know what also used to be a standard? Segregation. Not all standards are good. As we stand here on stolen indigenous land, I remind you that our tax dollars, my tax dollars, y'all's tax dollars are being used by our Oklahoma government to fund a genocide in Palestine. Just because some people refer to that region as Israel does not erase the thousands of years that that land has been populated by Palestinians. Just as this land is known as America, this state is known as Oklahoma, was stolen from indigenous stewardship using genocide by this government. Today we stand here discussing OKC Beautiful and cleaning up our planet in hypocrisy as our Oklahoma tax dollars fund bombs and ammunition that are being used to ravage the land with pollution and death. This genocide in Palestine is an environmental disaster funded by your tax dollars. Uh, the constituents of Oklahoma City and Ward 5, Mr. Matt Hinkle, no longer accept this manufactured consent. You all in this horseshoe have a unique opportunity to join more than 70 cities in this country um, who are calling, who are standing with humanity and on the right. Silence is violence. Stop letting this government use neocolonialism to enact yet another genocide upon indigenous peoples. Thank you.
Edward Morris?
Hello, Edward Morris, 500 West Main Street. Um, I'd like to talk about a very small issue affecting me and how it reflects on a larger issue the city is struggling with. Um, I live on the Marathon Route here, um, and every year, City of Oklahoma City sends a large crew of workers to grind up all the painted street markings and then come the next week and repaint all of them. Uh, presumably the goal of this is to, uh, this annual exercise is to make out-of-towners believe that all of the city's streetscapes are totally pristine for the marathon. Um, while I find this practice personally annoying, it really is indicative of a much larger issue. Uh, the city and state focuses on superficial problems instead of the important uh, issues that residents face. Uh, we have an education crisis uh, in this city that is leading to an extreme brain drain. This has already been talked about uh, at length uh, by council and we need to keep on talking about it. Um, last week I received this, a familiar email, uh, an email that you have all doubtless received from many different places. It read that such-and-such a woman is leaving such-and-such in local organization to take a job at a similar organization in a coastal blue state where they feel that they can write, uh, educate their family, uh, and feel safe having a family. Uh, I get these emails all the time. I assume some of you do as well. Uh, we also read this weekend that the Oklahoma State Department of Education uh, has lost its fourth senior executive in as many weeks. The voters of Oklahoma have chosen a superintendent that is dead-set on dismantling public education. There are those of you on this horseshoe who may think that private schools are the answer, but I have some very sobering news for you. I looked up some public statistics. I went to the ninth-best public school in Connecticut, just the ninth-best, not in the top five. My public high school in Connecticut sent more kids to Ivy League schools than the Cassidy School has in the last five years. Uh, so the Cassidy School is, I guess, the premier private school in the state of Oklahoma. So the best private schools here can't compete with a regular public school in Connecticut. The answer is to make public education the priority across the board. The state is not going to help and while I know this body does not have full control over schools, it can have a massive impact. When any issue comes before this body, I challenge the council to ask, what does this question mean for public school students and educators? When this city council is working on streetscapes and mobility, are they focusing from the schools outward so children can get safely to and from home? And mobility is a wonderful thing that I know you all prioritize. Um, uh, or are we just paying attention to the, the part of town where tourists might go? That's the tie-in to my, my petty issue of the unnecessary replacing of all of the marathon signage. Um, when a business is asking for a permit, uh, is the first question about the distance of that business from a school and how it might benefit students in the neighborhood. This is a problem that needs the full court press from both sides of the aisle. It will require all of you to ignore party affiliations and talk to the other side. Those of you on the right side of the political spectrum need to sit down with public school administrators and leaders of teachers' unions to find out what they could do to use support. And those on the left need to sit down with sports coaches and school security guards and resource officers to see what additional support they need. Uh, we are going to see a billion-dollar arena built here in the next five years.
30 seconds remaining.
When looking at the plans, uh, I hope you all, uh, which I hope will all be drawn up by a local architect and local engineer, uh, the city council needs to demand facilities for teams to do community outreach. Um, we need to ask where the gyms, classrooms and cafeterias. For a billion dollars, wouldn't it be amazing if Oklahoma City public school students uh, would have the facilities to learn about teamwork, physical therapy and kinesiology from some of the best athletes uh, and health providers in professional sports? And the council should also ask how many school buses can safely pull up to this venue at the same time? Uh, we s, uh, and finally, uh, I know that this body often gives out a Teacher of the Month award. Um, earlier today, we heard a debate about $90,000. Uh, I have an idea that what if instead of just a plaque and a nice handshake for Teacher of the Month, they were each given $5,000, uh, teaching bonus and $5,000 to donate to a school group, uh, or activity of their choice? That would show the city really values educators and students. And really quick, thank you so much for all you do on the maps programs and building new buildings. Let's show that the city can put equal effort into championing the people who occupy those buildings. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Nadia Rashid?
Hi, my name is Nadia Rashid. I live at 5609 Northwest 111th Street. Um, I am also here today to talk to you about uh, passing a ceasefire resolution. Um, a lot of cities in the United States, I'm sure you're aware, have been passing ceasefire resolutions. Um, I've spoken before about how I think this is something that we can all get behind because whether you support Israel or Palestine, more of the people are going to continue dying unless we do something about it. I believe that every avoidable death must be avoided and that counts for people on both sides. And that's why I want to see a ceasefire in my city. Um, a lot of major cities, you know, we talk a lot about wanting Oklahoma City to be a major city and wanting Oklahoma City to be um, like a big, big... major city and wanting Oklahoma City to be like a big, big city, and all the big cities are passing ceasefire resolutions. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask our Oklahoma City Council to do the same, and I would hope that if a ceasefire resolution ever came across your table, that you would think back to all the people that have come through the doors, all of your constituents who have come in and supported what's going on, and let you know that we want a ceasefire resolution, because ultimately, your job is to serve your constituents. And I think we've had a lot of us show up here and tell you that that's what we're wanting right now, and I think it would benefit everyone. Like I said, no matter who you support, more people on your side are going to continue dying if we don't make a change right now. So I think we can all get behind a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Emma Morrow?
Hi, my name is Emma. I'm from Ward Eight, and today I'm here to talk about Palestine as well. I have struggled to write a speech for today because constantly, every day, I am seeing dead people, innocent people, on my phone, and I don't know how to put that into words, the amount of deaths and war crimes that I have seen committed by Israel and supported by our country and by a lot of the people in our government. I am tired of seeing so many deaths that could be completely preventable. I'm tired of seeing people starving to death, literally, like they're just getting, like it's skin and bones. It's disgusting, and there are so many people that are supporting this, and it needs to Like, imagine if you got bombed and you just got taken out of the rubble, and you're disoriented, you're confused, you're injured, your whole family, you just got told, is dead. That is the reality for so many people in Gaza. Like, where is your empathy? Put yourself in their shoes. Think about it for a second. Like, they don't have any other choice. They can't get out. They're stuck there, and they're just getting carpet bombed constantly, every day. It has to stop. And I know that a lot of you probably don't realize the severity of this situation because you're not seeing it. So I'm going to record a video, and you guys can raise your hands, for those of you who are still left here, if you want me to mail you the accounts of journalists that are in Gaza documenting all of this stuff going on, so you can see firsthand what's happening. So I'm going to take that video now. You can raise your hand if you want to, those of you who want to be mailed. And as I can obviously see...
Thirty seconds remaining.
None of y'all want to? But I'm still going to mail all of you the accounts for the journalists, because you're not seeing it, you don't understand, and you won't understand until you see what's actually happening. All of the death, the destruction, the war crimes, it has to stop, and you won't understand until you see it, until you hear it. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Kristin Bruce?
Hello, my name is Kristin Bruce, 1601 Birkenhead Road. Thank you for serving our city. The more meetings I come to, the more respects I have for you all and all that you do for our city. I protest the development of PUD 1983. I recently read an interview published by the European Environment Agency. In it, their noise expert, Yulayliya Paris, said, "Many people don't realize noise pollution is an important problem impacting human health, including theirs. Of course, there are many more premature deaths associated with air pollution than for noise. However, noise seems to have a larger impact on indicators related to quality of life and mental health. In fact, according to the WHO findings, noise is the second-largest environmental cause of health problems after air pollution." So why am I talking about it? Supporters of amphitheaters tend to say that state-of-the-art technology will prevent any bleeding of sound to neighbors, neighbors in this case whose houses will be two thousand feet away from the stage. However, these claims are false. Residents living near dozens of other amphitheaters were told the same thing and is proven to be false advertisement. Even with a potential roof, this is still an outdoor concert hall. With the Turnpike and busy I-40 close by, they will have to turn up the volume to cover up any road noise. There's a claim that this venue will be family-friendly. It's not family-friendly to have a bass intruding on family dinners, a walk outside, bedtime stories, or sleep. I have seven children. We do that. As far as concerts go, there are no guarantees that bands playing there will be appropriate for families listening to across the street. A bar is not what I call a family-friendly environment less than a stone's throw away from the school's property. Canadian County is the fastest-growing county in the state right now. Houses are being built everywhere, and people are flocking to live there. We do need development and want it, but development that actually supports the growing numbers. There's a long list of businesses that would enrich and help sustain the rising amount of people. But a twelve-thousand-five-hundred-seat amphitheater that has concerts whenever they would want and a forever license enabling a fifty percent increase in sound levels without ever needing to get a noise permit...
Thirty seconds remaining.
This is not beneficial for the community. This is harmful to the quality of life and mental health of thousands. So please use common sense and vote no on April 9th in order to say yes to family, children, and health. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bruce. Dawn Taylor?
My name is Dawn Taylor, and I live at 10408 Lester Drive. Councilmen and women, city officials, neighbors, and friends, I'm here to protest PUD 1983 application by Mustang Creek Crossing LLC to rezone 810 South John Kilpatrick Turnpike. The vote on this is scheduled to take place on April 9th. I'm a resident of Ward Three, and my husband and I are owners of our residence. It's been almost twenty-five years since the first time I walked into our home at the open house at our address, and I knew that that was going to be our home. And in that twenty-five years, two children have been added, and it has been my blessing, a blessing and a privilege to watch both my children and the city grow and change during this time. Four years ago, there was a proposed plan for this space to be a hospital with retail shops. Now that sounds exciting, and, but now with this current proposal, all the sounds from this PUD will be not only a nuisance, as you've heard before, it will be noise pollution. While researching other amphitheaters, outdoor amphitheaters, I found in Bushy Creek Amphitheater in Texas that noises were heard for as far away as fifteen miles. This means that not only Ward Three, but other wards will be affected. Ward One is just about three miles from the proposed site to the north. Wards Two and Six are nine miles. Ward Five is ten miles to the southeast. This also does include the surrounding communities that Oklahoma City envelops, including Yukon, Mustang, Bethany, War Acres, Tuttle, and El Reno, that could be hearing or feeling these lower bass sounds from this venue. It's these lower bass sounds that are difficult to control, and I'm sure most of us in this room have had the experience of pulling up to a stoplight and either hearing or feeling these bass sounds from a vehicle going in the opposite direction. I especially worry about these lower bass sounds for those neighbors in Ward Three who are most vulnerable, including the veterans with PTSD, elderly with dementia, children, especially those with autism or sensory issues, and our furry friends, our pets, also are affected. Finally, I want to just tell you that I'd love to tell people that Oklahoma City is America's biggest small town, and that's because of the community that we have here. I know that we care about each other, and this is something that we have shown and what has become known as the Oklahoma Standard. The Oklahoma Standard, as you're aware, is about helping your neighbor in their time of need. And right now, I'm your neighbor, asking you all to help by voting no on the scheduled date of April 9th on PUD 1983. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Julie McCoy?
Last time I didn't have a speech, and I was all over the place. So, my name is Julie McCoy. I live in 10320 Paisley Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma, and I am here in protest against PUD 1983. I just wanted to have a little fun, not that it diminishes my passion. I got this. I want to thank you for all your sacrifices to serve us, ever be here every other week to see us, and not just hear us, but to listen, but to hear us, and to do your research. It's a blessing. I have five children, and when they were younger, they were into DC and Marvel, and still are. And my favorite was, and still is, The Guardians of Galaxy. I think it's because of the sixties and seventies music that's in it. I don't know. It's nice knowing that as a child or a young person, they have someone that they can look to, to protect, whether pretend superhero or in reality, parents and family. I am grateful for our democracy and that it's set up in reality with people such as yourself that serve and save and protect us from those who love money and value it more than people's livelihoods, welfares, and other interests, and their own best interests. I am one that still believes in this institution and in you, and when you were voted in by we, the people, you took it seriously and still do, and I appreciate it more than you know, more than I have words to describe. As a citizen, it is incredibly reassuring to know we have you. You are the guardians of our neighborhood and the citizens of the surrounding neighborhoods as well. Thank you for being here to protect us from the love of money and would try, that would try to rob us of our lives today, our future, and our generations to come, of a peaceful, of our peaceful sanctuaries that we call home. Thank you, City Council Guardians. Thank you.
Thank you. Ronnie Kirk?
My address is 2328 North Missouri. First, I want to apologize to the council and to the young man that was coming down when I walked out to adjusting my phone. I was halfway prepared. The picture I gave you, that's the picture of the little boy, eleven years old, on Southeast 15th Street. He had a skull fracture, in a coma for three days, a broken leg. I borrowed him a bicycle, and also have, let's see.
Thirty seconds, please.
Gina Standridge?
I represent Mid-Dale Schools for Ward Three. I am here today to ask you to vote no on the zoning of 1901 Grand. I'm asking you to look at the surrounding area, more than just three hundred feet. We have a neighborhood less than five hundred feet from where that jail will set with a thousand homes. We have an Epperali Heights Elementary School with six hundred and sixty-four students in that school. In the Mid-Dale area, the Dale City side, we have five schools within two to three minutes from where that jail will set. In Dale City Schools alone, we have four thousand kids in that area. I'm asking you to look at what it's going to do to that community. If you include Crooked Oak into that, there are eight schools within minutes of that. Crooked Oak has been pressured tremendously to move their stadium so that can be built there. They've been promised all kinds of things to move their stadium, and probably with no help to complete that from the ground up. So I am asking you to please think about that. Dale City alone is seven point five square miles. Our small city cannot take on the extra burdens of that. Actually, it's four by two, you know? It's a small community. We have struggled since May 3rd, 1999, tornadoes. We lost populations, and we still have not rebuilt from that. Our school district took a huge hit from May 3rd that we still haven't recovered from. And not to mention, there are no resources at 1901 Grand for the people who are going to be released in that area. The closest thing that I've seen is at least two miles away for them to even find a phone, a restroom in that area. There just are no resources. And history is going to repeat itself again. I implore you to look at the history of 1901 Grand, Hamilton Courts. Please do not zone that area to destroy two communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Casey... Okay, sorry, I can't read that. I don't want to butcher it, so. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Casey Whitfoot, and I live in Ward Three. My address is 1209 Edinburgh Drive, and I am on the legal protest list. And I am here to protest PUD 1983. If this council votes to approve the rezoning for the Sunset Amphitheater, it will make our homes unlivable. The Planning Commission on January 11th stated that the sound on Sarah Road would be equivalent to a freight train running on the tracks right behind our house and two schools. How loud do you think it is going to be for us and these children in these schools? I think putting an outdoor amphithe- I think putting an outdoor amphitheater within hundreds of feet of residential homes and schools is just about the worst idea I have ever heard. As a parent, I am concerned that sound checks will start at 2:00 PM while children are homeschooling in our community and school is still in session. School dismisses in the afternoon at 2:50 for the elementary and 3:35 for the middle school. Buses run until 5:30 PM in our neighborhood. An influx of traffic will create an even bigger problem than we already have getting children home. Since the middle schoolers, some of them, they walk to and from school and many parents are concerned that their children's safety will be impacted if people are camping out like they did at the Paycom Center for the recent Drake concert. Our children need to be taken into consideration because some children who attend these schools have sensory issues, ADHD, and other health problems. How is this going to affect them? Allowing Notes Live to start at 8:00 AM through 10:30 PM and 11:00 PM on weekends is around 15 hours of constant noise. This is unacceptable. Many parents put their children to bed before 9:00 PM but will not be able to do so with this level of noise and their homes vibrating. I feel we have been targeted to have this in our backyards because we are a middle-class community. And if you vote yes, the very laws that were put into place to protect our quiet community will be taken from us to accommodate a million-dollar company at the expense of the Oklahoma people living in Ward 3. So, I want to ask you, would all of you like this in your backyard or in your neighborhood? Thank you.
George Joseph?
Respected councilmembers, mayor, my name is George Joseph. I'm here to seek your help on a personal problem that I am facing. I own a small apartment on Northeast 14th between Lindsay Street and Phillips Avenue. And city recently replaced the main sewage line behind my building. A week after the contractor finished the line and the line was through again, a water leak started in the basement. I had two apartment units in the basement, the basement unit. I had three plumbing companies come and check for leaks, water leaks in my property. And a retired engineer from the city, he also came and looked at the property. And all of them certified that there is no active water leak within my property plumbing lines. And there is a active water leak going on for a few months on Northeast 14th Street, right across from my property. And I called the city maintenance line. They came out and checked the chlorintersting and they said, yeah, it's a water leak and a work order will be issued. It was in the second week of February. And it still has not been repaired. There are a few white flags put around, but it has not been repaired. And the contractor came out and looked at the sewage line and he also says that there is no leak on the lanes that he replaced. But I still have this problem going on for almost 50 days now. And I have no way of, I have no idea how I can fix it. My tenants are really mad at me and I'm at a loss at this point what I need to do. And the plumbers advised me to request the city if they stop the leak on the city main line, it might help to identify if anything else need to be done. And what they are suggesting me are the words that may run into thousands of dollars.
Thirty seconds, please.
So, I basically beg the city, if you can do something to look into this, it would really help me.
So, I'll talk to our utilities director.
Yeah. What is the actual address, Mr. Joseph?
733 Northeast 14th Street. I have detailed everything I have done and all the departments I have contacted within the city to fix this issue.
Okay. Well, I can take that. And this is a similar issue, not just for your neighborhood that I've had with a different resident. So, I appreciate that. And the ways that we can look at how we respond. And I think that's what where my issue was last week with my other resident that had an issue. She called the city and we went out, looked at it. And when we came back to look at it again, she did not know or have any information that we had been out. So, if there is a way for us to follow up and maybe leave a note that says we were present, because that in some ways leaves a gap for people to understand if we have been present, to understand if there is a follow-up for an issue or a follow-up to mitigate the issue either way. Because I guess some of the issue rules, maybe said or unsaid, have been not to talk to the resident unless they're outside. So, those are, again, confusions that I know for sure that I have had with the resident. I know this may be a little different, but it still sounds maybe somewhat similar. So, I'm hoping we will, we'll look at this and we'll be in contact. Do we have this form with this phone number on it as well? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. That concludes Citizens to be Heard. And we are now going to go into executive session. That concludes Citizens to be Heard, and we are now going to go into executive session. Bueller. We could, yeah. I appreciate everyone who stuck around and waited for us and has continued to watch. Probably just my wife. Okay, we are adjourned for lack of quorum.